Good evening, everyone. We are going to get started now with our public hearing. I could ask council members to take their seats.
I would if somebody got out of mine.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to City Hall Council Chambers for tonight's public hearing. It's May 25, 2017, and we are reconvening from May 23, two nights ago when we started into this public hearing. And we'll start now, first and foremost, with the roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Robertson's in the chair. Counselor Louis absent from the chamber at the moment. Counselor Stevenson. Counselor Deal. Counselor Jang. Counselor Reimer absent from the chamber. Counselor Meggs. Counselor Ball is absent with sick leave. Counselor Carr. And Counselor Affleck. And Counselor DeGenova. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And before we start, I'll just acknowledge we're on the unseated homelands of Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh First Nations. And we are in the middle of this public hearing on the rezoning proposed for 105 Kiefer Street and 544 Columbia Street. And I'll just make a few announcements in terms of tonight. We are on speaker number 36 on our speakers list. The speakers list has now grown to 235 registered speakers. So in all likelihood, we are not going to hear all of the speakers who are registered this evening between now and 11:00 p.m., when we will recess. And the backup for tonight is tomorrow night, Friday night, starting at 5:00 p.m. to continue hearing from speakers on this item. And we start this evening with answers from our staff. There was an opportunity for council to email in questions, clarifying questions to our staff at the end of the Tuesday night session two nights ago. So we'll start with responses from staff, and then we'll go to our speakers list. Just in terms of announcements for our speakers, for those who weren't here on Tuesday, just clarify a few things. You have five minutes to make your remarks before council, and your comments should be focused on the merits of the report that's being considered by council. We ask that you do state whether you support or are opposed to the recommendations. And speakers may speak once. If you have further comments, you can submit them in writing, either on paper to the clerks or to public hearing@vancouver.ca. And if you are speaking on behalf of three or more persons or three organizations, you get an additional three minutes to speak, up to eight minutes. We ask that the persons or representative of the organizations must also be present here and must not be speakers themselves. You can let me know that. There is obviously limited seating here in council chambers on the third floor, so registered speakers will be permitted access to the floor here in council chambers based on your number. And city hall security are keeping track of all that. So we have people in the foyer, and we had the other night lots of people downstairs in the town hall room. So it's great to see lots of people engaged and part of this. We just have to be patient with our system of making sure people are able to get into the council chamber prior to speaking. And we ask when you're finished speaking if you could move on out of the council chamber to make way for other speakers who are coming in. That would be great. You don't have to use all of your five-minute speaking. I will let you know when you get close, and there's a timer on the podium as well. And we do have a translator here who can help for those who need translation. And I will give you a heads-up as you approach five-minute time limit. I will let you know, and you may have questions from council as well after you've made your comments. So with that...
And thank you, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, we are going to go to... Yeah, we'll just have our translator here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Angela Ko. I'm the translator for tonight. [speaking in a foreign language]. [speaking in a foreign language]. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. And I'll now ask our clerks to read the additional summary of correspondence received since 1:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 23.
Counselors received 48 pieces of correspondence in support of the application, 69 signatures on a petition in support of the application, 107 pieces of correspondence in opposition to the application, an additional 137 signatures on a petition in opposition of the application, two pieces of correspondence in the other category. This represents all correspondence received from 1:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 23 to approximately 3:30 p.m. today.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And we'll now hear responses to questions from our staff, questions that were posed by council over email following the meeting on Tuesday night.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yen's the only planner for this application. Since the public hearing on Tuesday on this item, staff have received a total of 14 questions from council to which we would like to respond. The first question is, if there is no density limit in HA1A, how is an appropriate density determined and who determines it? The appropriate density is determined based on urban design performance of the proposal in response to a site-specific context. The performance is evaluated against the HA1A design guidelines, which set out intent and specific requirements to achieve a good contextual fit in the historic context. A development application under HA1A is decided by the director of planning or the development permit board after evaluating the proposal based on the HA1A design guidelines and taking into consideration comments from the public and advisory groups. Next question is whether the height of Chinatown, what is the height of the Chinatown parcade and whether the structure was allowed, was constructed under existing zoning? The development permit for the Chinatown parcade was issued in 1993 with a height of approximately 70 feet. No rezoning was required. The next question is why there was a substantial property value increase in Chinatown between 2015 and 2016. Citywide, there had been a very substantial increase in property values for that period of time. Downtown property values, for example, rose 21% from January 2015 to January 2016. Similar rise occurred in to Vancouver East area. So this overall rise in property values has likely had a ripple effect on many neighborhoods, The next question is, will the 1.6 million DCL required of this development remain in Chinatown and how these DCLs can benefit the community in the future? The site is located within a citywide DCL district. As with all other new development in the citywide DCL district, the DCL funds will be collected from this development. Then they are deposited into a DCL reserve for growth-related needs in housing, transportation, parks, and childcare on a citywide basis. Allocation and spending of citywide DCLs to eligible public amenities require council approval as part of the city regular capital planning and budgeting processes. If there are DCL-eligible capital projects located in Chinatown that are in the current and future capital plan and capital budget, then they are eligible for DCL spending. So there is no specific allocation of the projects DCL through the actual rezoning approval process. The next question is, can public art contribution be considered a CAC, Community Amenity Contribution? There is a standard requirement for public art for all rezonings with over 100,000 square feet of a floor area. Sorry about that. The public art contribution for this project is approximately $232,000. This is not considered a community amenity contribution, CAC, which is a voluntary contribution by the rezoning applicant to pay for costs associated with rezoning. That said, a public art contribution is a public benefit. The question is, the next question is, is the CRU provided by the applicant at a discounted rate to a seniors group considered a public benefit? Yes, any on-site amenity that will be secured are considered a public benefit. Next question, how do market retail rates compare to rates at the Chinese Cultural Center, including the 10% nonprofit discount? While staff have not been able to ascertain the retail rental rates for the Chinese Cultural Center, staff estimate that the market net rates for new retail space in Chinatown could be around $40 per square foot. A 50% discount office rate is what the applicant has offered. Next question, how many market strata residentials are there currently in Chinatown and what kinds of options there are for individuals and families in the community? There are currently 732 condo units in the Chinatown area. The rezoning application includes 106 strata units and 34% of which are for families. And in response to design conditions outlined in the report, the applicant proposes to decrease the number of strata units, you know, to further decrease the number of strata units in the development with the intent to further increase the percentage of family units. The next question is, some speakers, correspondents to mayor and council have requested that the city purchase the entire site and consider a 100% social housing or amenities with amenity space. Is this feasible, considering the site is privately owned? So it is correct that what is being presented for council consideration at this public hearing is a privately initiated rezoning application on a privately-owned site. Staff have not investigated the implications and possibilities of city purchasing and developing the site. The next question seeks clarification on whether council's 2010 motion regarding Kiefer Triangle Site still stands or if this was superseded by the 2011 rezoning policy for Chinatown South. In 2010, council adopted city's staff's recommendations of the historic area high review. For HA1A Chinatown South, council gave directions to increase the base zoning height to 90 feet, and through rezoning, the whole area is eligible to be considered increased height to 120 feet. In addition, council passed two relevant motions. One, that for the purpose of economic realization while also considering heritage values, staff report back on options for a limited number of carefully and strategically located additional higher building sites in the range of 150 feet tall in Chinatown South. So they ask staff to seek 150-foot-high sites. And the second one is that the Kiefer Triangle Site is not supported by council as a 150-foot-tall higher building site, and that heights above the base zoning height of 90 feet would be of concern due to potential impacts. A year later, in 2011, council adopted the rezoning policy for Chinatown South, which allows consideration of buildings up to 120 feet tall and up to 150 foot tall for four blocks of sites along Main Street. The Kiefer Triangle Site was included in this rezoning policy and may be considered up to 150 feet tall. Council also embedded design guidelines in the rezoning policy to manage height amassing of the taller building forms. So in adopting the rezoning policy in 2011, instead of excluding this site from being considered for 120-foot development, council acknowledged the concerns from 2010 by providing policy direction to manage the impacts of additional height on this site and others. The next question is regarding the status of the social impact study. On January 26, 2010, council adopted recommendations from the Historic Area Height Review. At the same meeting, council also directed that a social impact study be conducted to assess effect on the existing low-income community of new developments in the historic area and where opportunities for enhanced affordability and livability may be achieved. Work on the social impact assessment began in October 2010 and was completed and adopted by council in March 2014. The scope of the SIA included the historic area and the rest of the downtown east side. The downtown east side plan includes nine social impact objectives described in the SIA and a set of social indicators to be monitored regularly to understand changes in the neighborhood. The findings of the SIA also informed policies in the development of the downtown east side plan. The rezoning policy for Chinatown South was adopted by council in 2011. There was no halt in rezoning in Chinatown, not even during the development of the downtown east side plan. The next question staff received is regarding the HA1 district that is designated National Historic Site of Canada. What is the city doing to protect its character? Working with the community, there are numerous initiatives the city is currently embarking on to comprehensively build a future for Chinatown that is rooted in its history and its people. A few key examples of such initiatives include the investment of capital funds and CACs to over 30 benevolent society buildings, the establishment of the Chinatown Society Heritage Buildings Legacy Program, and the introduction into Chinatown a new neighborhood fit tool to guide developers and business license applicants on ways in which they should manage change and meet the downtown east side plan's social impact objectives. And lastly, council, as part of the upcoming Chinatown Policy Report, there will be additional reporting on change in number of businesses, change in Chinese grocery food stores, change in land value assessment, to further understand what kind of effect changes are having on Chinatown's character. And the last few questions are related to the proposed rents for the 25 social housing units proposing developments. And to answer that question, I'll pass it on to Celine Mobles.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Celine Mobles from Housing Projects Community Services. So we were asked a number of questions in relation to SAFER and rents in the building. The first question, well, and we were also asked how common it was for a developer to independently negotiate with BC Housing for the purchase of social housing units and whether this could impact city negotiations with BC Housing for other social housing unit sites. I think this project is somewhat unique. We haven't seen this before, where the developer has been negotiating directly with BC Housing on a particular site, but we don't believe it will negatively impact our negotiations with BC Housing on other projects. We have a number of projects that we're working on with them currently. The second question was in reference to the report that states that 25, the 25 social housing units will be purchased for housing, purchased by BC Housing for seniors and operated by a nonprofit after an RFP process. We were asked if these units would be rented to individuals eligible or on the SAFER program. As Armin Amorlia from BC Housing indicated, the social housing units will be made available to seniors eligible or on SAFER. We were also asked to explain what the rents would look like for seniors on SAFER. SAFER, or the Shelter Aid for Elderly Renters, is a rent supplement program that reimburses part of the difference between 30% of a senior's total income and their rent. The program has a sliding scale that gives the most money to seniors with the least income. Regardless of the actual rent, SAFER will only consider rent amounts up to a maximum level of $765 for a single person or $825 for a couple living in Vancouver. We were asked to provide some examples of income versus rents and the SAFER contribution for these units. So if you're a low-income senior receiving old-age supplement or guaranteed income supplement, your income would range between $1,200 to $1,600 a month. If your income was $1,200 a month and your rent was $765, you would receive a $364 a month rent subsidy. If your income was on the higher end, or $1,600 a month, you would receive less of a subsidy at $237 a month. The BC Housing representative also mentioned that rents would be approximately a maximum of $700 per unit. We were asked to comment on this statement. I think Armin was not referring to rents, but rather that SAFER will only consider rent amounts up to the 765 maximum for a single person. As noted above, SAFER provides a subsidy to make up part of the difference between 30% of income, a senior's income, and their rent. We were also asked what the vacancy rate in Chinatown is for seniors looking for units at $700 a month. While we don't know the exact vacancy rate for this particular price point, we do know that CMHC vacancy rate reported in 2016 for East Hastings Zone, which includes Chinatown, was 0.6% for a studio and 0.7% for a one-bedroom, which is lower than the citywide vacancy rate of 0.8%. In terms of rents, the CMHC average rent for a studio in the same area in 2016 was $975, and a one-bed is $1,000. And those rates are slightly higher than they were in 2015. The other thing that we did is we did a quick Craigslist search for rents in the neighborhood at the $700 mark, and there were no new self-contained social, or new self-contained units. So with bathrooms and kitchens, what we found were seven SROs, mostly in the kind of general downtown east side area, and none in Chinatown. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for the responses to all those questions. That was a lot of material to go through, and that means we're ready to go to our speakers' list. And this first speaker of the night will be from the public body representatives list. We have here the Chair of our Seniors Advisory Committee, Colleen McGinnis, who will take the first spot, and then Sunny Wong, who was first on the speakers' list, will be after that. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor Robertson, members of council. The Seniors Advisory Committee was late in getting our letter in, so I brought copies for everybody for this evening. We are concerned, and I have to say, if you want the short answer, we are opposed to this project. Of utmost concern is the matter of seniors' housing. It was here the other night when Jean Swanson so elegantly and accurately summarized the financial limitations for the vast majority of seniors living in Chinatown. The city's commitment to become an age-friendly city, as we spell out on page two of our letter, includes the requirement for the provision of adequate and affordable housing for low-income seniors. We took the first step and got the endorsement of the provincial government for designation as an age-friendly city, but we are sadly very lacking in our movement towards the United Nations goal. This project does not advance us at all. We do not support it as it fails in its commitment to provide for the most needy and benefits the developer, and the benefits to the developer are too generous. Three stories of market accommodation in exchange for 25 affordable rental units, but only eight of those will provide for the very, very needy at the low housing rate. That is the position of the Seniors Advisory Committee.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I'm under my five minutes, I think.
Yeah, you're under your five minutes. And you have questions from First Counselor DeGenova.
Yes. Thank you very much, Ms. McGinnis. You had mentioned that eight of those units would only provide for the seniors at the lowest rates. What I just heard from staff was that all 25 of the units are actually considered social housing units and would be available to seniors on SAFER. So I just tried to do the calculations. So if your income was $1,200, and crunching the numbers, at the lowest rates, you'd be paying $435 for one of these units out of pocket.
I can tell you that as a person born in Canada, who has only ever worked in Canada, that I do not receive $1,200 a month for CPP, an old-age pension. So if that's the case, then I would suggest to you that it is very unlikely that the elderly ladies who worked in Chinatown for minimum wage would qualify for $1,200. That would mean, therefore, that they would not be eligible for the maximum SAFER top-up.
Okay. The maximum SAFER top-up, though, would go to the lowest income. That was my understanding from our staff.
But it would still not apply for somebody who was, you have eight units for the very lowest income. Those would be at the $400 rate, I believe. The rest of them are at a different rate, and yes, SAFER would apply, but I would suggest to you that the people are not, even with the SAFER allowance, they would not have sufficient funds.
It's my understanding that all 25 units are social housing units. So I will ask our staff about that, but I didn't think that it only applied to eight. I believe that it applied to all 25. Page 18 of the report states that there will be 25 social housing units on the second floor. So all 25 would be considered social housing units. So did you believe that only eight of them were social housing units out of the 25?
The others says affordable. The other, I believe the report says the others are affordable.
Okay. Well, right here on page 18, I'll ask our staff, I see them writing now, but it says 25 social housing units, and I know that the guidelines are quite strict for what is considered social housing. So I'll ask about that again. But thank you very much for that, and I look forward to seeing the copy of your letter.
Okay. Counselor Carr, questions?
Yes. Thanks. Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for taking the time to come out and for the committee to provide its input. And certainly, my understanding of social housing, the way we define it in the city is only one-third of the units need to be at the Hill's rate.
Yes.
And the other two-thirds can be at some other rent.
As long as your income is under $35,000, I believe is defined as affordable. And that's our concern.
Okay. Got it. What I'm interested in is your statement where we, as a city, have said we are an age-friendly city, and you said, but we are not meeting the United Nations objectives. Could you tell me what those are?
I can tell you that it's a three-step process, and you have to get the city to agree to that designation. Then you get the province to agree to that designation, which we did, and we received a small grant which we assigned to dementia training as an age-friendly approach. And then I believe there are 19 critical points that you have to achieve in order to get the World Health Organization designation as an age-friendly city. And that was the goal of the Seniors Committee when we put forward the plan. It wasn't simply to put our title and say we are age-friendly, but it was to get the World Health Organization designation. We have a long way to go.
Thank you. And I thank you for the reminder about that, and I hope you will continue to remind us about that.
We have it on the top of our work plan.
Thank you so much, Ms. McGinnis.
Okay. That's all your questions. Thank you very much for being here on behalf of the Seniors Advisory Committee.
You're welcome.
And back to our speakers' list, Speaker number 36, Sunny Wong. Thank you for your patience and just missing the cutoff the other night. Welcome.
That's okay. I've got lots of time for this. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sunny Wong. I'm a Vancouver resident and business owner. I'm involved in many community initiatives in Vancouver, from the Board of Change to the Leo Awards, to the arts, and many others. And more than 25 years ago, I was part of the founding group of the Dragon Boat Festival, spearheading it to the signature event it has become. I have a strong pedigree of community participation and involvement, and if I were to ask the constituents of the organizations I'm involved with, I believe most would oppose the rezoning. I grew up in Chinatown. It was a wonderful place to grow up. What perplexes me is how the leaders in Chinatown could have stood by and watched it deteriorate. Some of them have spoken at this public hearing, yet have the audacity to believe that one building is going to change the fate of Chinatown when they themselves couldn't demonstrate their leadership and collaboration to continue Chinatown's great legacy. I've only been part of this Chinatown discussion for about two months, but since then, I've become part of a group of concerned citizens who care about the future of Chinatown. You can find our thinking at chinatownproject.ca. Since launching the website last Friday before the long weekend, we've been successful at collecting 529 names who support our aspirations, beliefs, and principles. On our homepage, it says, "Vancouver Chinatown is a place of cultural, historic, and community significance. A 12-story condominium tower does not belong in Chinatown. Not now, not ever." We believe the proposed rezoning of 105 Kiefer should be stopped. We believe the City of Vancouver Planning Department's recommendation of a ban on rezonings above 90 feet and frontages in excess of 75 feet should be put into effect and rigorously applied to 105 Kiefer. Essentially, 105 Kiefer doesn't meet the revised proposed Chinatown policies, even though the process is ran at almost a parallel timeframe. 105 Kiefer should not get a free pass on this policy stipulation. Chinatown deserves to be governed by a set of bylaws that enshrines its cultural heritage in the same way that Gastown and Granville Island enjoy their own recognized statuses. Finally, a vision for Chinatown 2.0 is needed, with culture as its core value. And the principles that we apply to our thinking are these. First, we believe in positive development. We're not anti-development. not anti-development. We support smart development that places cultural, historical, and community significance at its center. We believe, secondly, that we need to respect the past and create the future. We do not believe in returning to Chinatown the past. Rather, we believe history needs to inform the future and be factored into its plan. Third, culture is the core. Chinatown, by its own name, is rooted in Chinese culture. The culture evolves, too, so a new cultural paradigm of Chinatown is ours to envision. Fourth, Chinatown is a place. Chinatown belongs to all of us. She radiates a sense of place and a sense of mind. Chinatown's well-being is our well-being. Fifth, community is the goal. An inclusive approach that considers all stakeholder groups is what we seek. A strong cohesive Chinatown community that fits in with the fabric of Vancouver and draws the admiration of the world is what we aspire to achieve. By allowing the rezoning to proceed, we in the city are committing an act that has eroded society for the last 30 years. We have socialized risks and privatized returns. That's right. We've socialized risks and privatized returns. The result is record corporate profits, inequality, and massive load on the public sector to meet societal needs. Doesn't this sound like the situation facing Chinatown? By having BC Housing buy the social housing units, aren't we socializing risk by having us, the taxpayer, take on the needs of social housing, allowing the developer to absolve themselves of all this responsibility? Let's be honest, this social housing is characterized as a gift, but rather, it's not. It's an exchange for additional floors on the building subsidized by us, the taxpayers. It smacks of the old marketing trick seen on TV where the announcer says, "Oh, wait." And if you order now, you get an additional product at no extra cost, just pay separate shipping and handling. Invariably, the cost of the free product is buried in the shipping and handling. Let's not fool ourselves. Counselors, I dare say the task before you is a simple one: vote for or against rezoning. On the merits of the building, you may say it's okay because it's just a physical structure. But I also believe the question you are voting on is wrong. It's not a rezoning question. It's a community question. So if you were to vote to rezone the community, would you go ahead and do that with the same amount of conviction as recommended by staff? So I encourage City Council to vote against the rezoning of 105 Kiefer because while you are favoring a building, you are reneging on a culture and a community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Carr has questions for you.
And I have the list of 529 individuals who signed up on our website here.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Carr, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for taking the time to come, and especially when you were the last person not to have spoken last time. Appreciate that. I'm interested in what you and the people who have signed on to your website and to your group would like to see in place of what is being proposed.
They would like to see an entirely contextual opportunity for Chinatown that embraces culture as the core. So if you think about a building, does that contribute to culture? Perhaps, but perhaps not. We feel that really taking an opportunity and looking at Chinatown in its entirety, not just from the perspective of one building, is an important step that needs to happen. So an entire envisioning process that allows culture to be the main thread that brings together all the parts of Chinatown.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's your questions. Thanks very much, Mr. Wong. Thanks for being here on behalf...
One of the clerks?
Yep, the clerk can take that. Thank you. And our next speaker is number 37, Jim Ho. Is Jim Ho here? Speaker number 37. No Jim Ho, so we go to 38, Yook Kwan Ying. That's our next speaker, followed by Cho San Lam.
Your mayor and councillors. My name is Ng Yook Kuen. I live in the east side of Vancouver for 45 years. Vancouver is not a big place. Every piece of land is expensive. And the population is growing. In order to revitalize Chinatown, there are four words. I support the redevelopment of 105 Kiefer Street to 12-story high building. Because there are 25 units for seniors, for low-income people on the second floor. And also, the ground level, it has a center for the seniors. For activities like kung fu, like opera, and other activities. After the building is built. There will be several hundred people that will be going through there. And it will bring back businesses to Chinatown. Time is money, and so is the land. Dear mayor and councillors. I hope that you support. That this redevelopment will be approved and be soon. In order to revitalize Chinatown. On May 23rd. There is a public... So there is a provincial official. He suggested the site to be transformed into a park. I oppose what he is proposing. We lack housing. It will be a waste of taxpayers' money. I suggest that you do not take his idea. I wish you... Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Doji, thank you for coming. Cho San Lam, speaker number 39, is next. Is Cho San Lam here? Cho San Lam, not here. Okay, next speaker, 40 Mo Mojtabavi, followed by 41 Ben Liu.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Robertson and councillors. My name is Mojhan Mojtabavi, and I'm here to support the rezoning for 105 Kiefer Street. I've spent most of my adult life living in Vancouver, and I now call Chinatown home. As a local resident and active member of this community, I hope that council will carefully consider this project based not only on the local policy for which it conforms to, but the direct and indirect benefits it will bring to Chinatown. It's undeniable that Chinatown is rich in culture and is an important part of Vancouver's history. However, today's Chinatown is not what it once was. Chinatown is evolving, and it is not the same place my parents would take us to visit in the 80s and 90s. No neighborhood remains static. BD Living has worked with the community for over three years on this proposal and has revised it several times to respond to the community's needs and wishes. The design team has done an exceptional job navigating through the policy requirements to keep this development in line with the local Chinatown character, as well as respecting Chinatown's history. The size and placement of the building has been designed to acknowledge the relationship to the Chinatown Monument, Memorial Plaza, and the neighboring Dr. Sunnyet Sun Garden, with deeper setbacks and lower FSR in consideration of the cultural significance of this corner. We are all aware this project has become the subject and focus of protect Chinatown from displacement. I, too, do not want to see historic buildings being demolished or the displacement of historic businesses and/or existing residents. However, this site is vacant. It has sat vacant for decades and has previously been a service station. In fact, this vacant property has the opportunity to finally contribute to the economic growth of Chinatown and those who are in need of housing. Both seniors at below-market rates, families, couples, and singles at market rates. As a local resident, I've also been exposed to quite a bit of misinformation in the community about this project. On the weekend, after having lunch at Kiefer, I was handed a flyer from a young woman and asked to stop 105 Kiefer due to the tower being built and to be replacing the Chinatown Memorial Monument. I explained to the young woman that, in fact, she was incorrect, and the site in question was the empty parking lot that would be next to the memorial monument, and she was in disbelief. This now makes me wonder how many residents and members of the public have been misled and are currently misformed about this proposed rezoning. Another fact I would like to clear up to both sides is that it is not eight, but in fact, there will be 25 units dedicated to seniors' affordable housing at safer rates, as confirmed by BC Housing on Tuesday, in addition to a ground-floor cultural space leased at below-market rate to offer recreational engagement to seniors and residents. This empty lot has been nothing but a nesting ground for crime. I, as a young woman, do not feel safe going by it at night. At the previous open house I attended in January, neighboring residents at 545 Columbia were heard complaining of being unable to sleep due to knife fights and disturbances that they often hear taking place. And these were two young gentlemen that were in their 20s. With this proposed rezoning, this empty lot can now finally be a positive contribution to not only the Chinatown community, but our next generation. The public hearing process affords all individuals, young, old, different race, ethnicity, support or oppose, the opportunity to have a voice and to share their opinion. Tuesday, I waited for six hours in the hopes that I could share my opinion as someone who has made Chinatown their home. We all have the right to be respected and heard and to not be attacked by the opposed on this project. The new project illustrates that Chinatown is a community that embraces individuals of all ages and backgrounds. It is a community that should welcome and embrace everyone, mainstream, other ethnic minorities, Chinese descent alike. Tuesday, I listened to speakers that shared their opinions, those that supported, those that opposed. Both stated the need for more senior housing in Chinatown. Both stated the need for more cultural and community space. The proposed development offers a facility that includes market housing for everyone regardless of race or age, that offers senior housing and that offers facilities for community usage, and that offers business opportunities via retail storefronts. These are all paramount to ensure the proper, long-term sustainability and the future of Vancouver's Chinatown. The alternative, a vacant parcel of land or a lower-height building that offers no additional benefits to the community other than providing residential market units. Mayor and council, I encourage you, as a Vancouver resident and someone that has made Chinatown their home, to grant this proposal and approval and continue the revival of Vancouver's Chinatown. I, like so many others, firmly believe this project will breathe life back into the story of Chinatown that we all know and love. Thank you. I'm sorry if I spoke really quickly.
That's great. You made it under your five minutes, and you have questions for Counselor Carr.
Thanks, Ms. Mojtabavi. Moj...
It's really hard. It's Mojtabavi.
Yes, I just have one question. And it's really, I think, a difference of what we've heard BC Housing talk about in terms of the units. And so I'm going to clarify with staff, but my understanding is you heard that all 25 units would be offered at safer...
Yes, at safer rates.
All right. What I heard was eight will be for sure, and they are going to aim for 25 when they work with whoever's going to be the housing provider. So I'll seek clarification on that. I'm just that we all are working from the same information.
Definitely. I think there's been a lot of information that's been going around. So that is what was confirmed with me, and I was here on Tuesday night as well, so that all 25 units would be at safer rates.
Okay. I'll clarify that, too. Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Jiang, questions?
Oh, I'm back.
That's okay.
Most people walk out on me all the time. Let's see, including him. You mentioned misinformation. I was wondering if you had a copy of the flyers or...
I don't. I didn't bring it with me.
Was it a petition or...
I was just down there eating, and I was just walking by, and they handed it to me. And I was quite surprised to hear, have it pointed out to me, and then to see her face, and I told her it was actually the empty parking lot next to her. And I don't know who was telling her the information, but that's what she truly believed. And she was shocked when I explained to her that it was the empty lot and not the statue that was going to be taken down.
So they actually said that it was going to take down the statue?
Yes, the monument, yeah.
Wow. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I don't want to walk out on anyone else.
No problem. Thank you for being here. Speaker number 41, Ben Liu, is next. 42's withdrawn, and Celine Choung is after Ben Liu. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Ben Liu, I'm a Vancouver resident. This is not usually my scene. I'm a filmmaker and a TV commercial producer. I'm not in favor of this development from the perspective of cultural alienation. But before I can elaborate on that, I want to say that I've been hearing the supporting and opposing voices in this room and from the media. Both CAMs have their merits and essentially want a better future for Chinatown. There's no doubt about that, albeit through very different lenses and vastly different visions. I personally find this project, as is, a little uninspiring and smack of sort ofism. From a business point of view, this undertaking is very transactional, and for business, all the fiduciary duty, right is so, well, most of the time. But this is not another light industry song. This is about a crucial piece of history. Our young city has a speak of volume of how we have evolved and how much more we ought to do to present something bolder, something more original, more creative, audacious in thinking and planning. Vancouver Chinatown deserves that at least. This kind of a "that will do" attitude, in fact, is evident with something laissez-faire, an attitude almost cavalier towards what defines us and matters to us, which brings me back to the point of cultural alienation. As a producer, one of my recent projects, a primetime network TV drama that features both English and Chinese performing languages and led by almost all Chinese-Canadian cast, the first time in the history of North American television, was met with an astounding outpour of support from our audiences. Much of the feedback has been very emotional and moving. And one older Canadian-Chinese lady told me in person that she was so thrilled to see in her lifetime that her community was finally being recognized on screen in a sense that the so-called final frontier with substance and commitment, you know, normalization of the other Canadians. Not just lip service and gesture, but real thoughtful, caring, meaningful steps that are truly equal to all important decisions in our country and our city lives. The buzzword in the feedback was, to me, was "truly equal." And I also was remembered that. She asked me rather cheekily. She said, "Do you have all night?" So I'm not going to insult everyone's intelligence or your knowledge of a city's history here. I think we all know what she meant by that. So remember that one Oscar-winning hashtag, Hollywood's so white? Or do we want another hashtag called Vancouver City Hall's so white? Notion of being white in this context, it goes way beyond skin colors. In our case, we first to the cavalier attitude to the others. It means the lack of understanding and appreciation of other communities' contribution to Canada's nation-building. It reflects the political experience in our decision-making bodies, big and small, public and private. It compounds onto the reality of cultural alienation, what is cultural alienation? According to New York Times Opinion piece written two days ago on the notion of alienation, the sociologist Robert Niesbeck wrote, and I quote, "An alienation is a state of mind that can find a social order remote, incomprehensible, or fraudulent before real hope or desire, inviting apathy, boredom, and even hostility," unquote. Often, a political class, the business captains, the machiavilions, the strategists, commonly often diverse, sometimes conflicting viewpoints in our community, and hope this opposition would, in time, blow over. This attitude would create obvious outcomes: political apathy, electoral frustration, and protest votes, none of which is good for a city and a collective state of mind. We all end up paying for it one way or another. So the question is pretty simple. We want to be We want to be, although it serves as a reminder of being indifferent to a community's pride in Chinatown, or should our city show some real TLC and imagination to this piece of Canadian history? It means so much for all of us, not just the Chinese. The Chinatown is not what you see in Jack Nicholson's masterpiece. This Chinatown is a leaving monument for all the rights and wrongs happened before and the wrongs still creeping up. When we are faced with far-reaching consequences of decisions such as this one, one has to ask, do we really belong? Do we truly matter, if us show us? I mean, inclusive society, all histories need to be respected, conserved, and taught to our future generations. Vancouver Chinatown is a living history, and it belongs to the history of Canada, the whole country, and our entire populace. And the fact that we're even debating a rather obviously unfiting development in the thick of Chinatown is pretty telling in itself. You know something that would be quite ironic? If this project is allowed to build, the rich history and character of Chinatown would be the front and center of this project's marketing campaign and sales brochure, and we all know that. That would be pretty rich, wouldn't it? So we moved beyond these debates a long time ago. We should have, but obviously we're not. Sorry, I'm over.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here and sharing your thoughts. We appreciate that. And councillor Carr, you have questions?
Thank you. Fascinating. How do you overcome cultural alienation in one building?
Well, you don't overcome that, but this reflects that. When... It is ironic, it sometimes doesn't mean that people get the mechanisms why a certain decision is being made, right? All decisions are compromise, and whatever decision comes out of the chamber, I respect it because I voted this chamber as one of the voters. But what the optic is to the voters whom you know, we just had an election came out, provincial election, right? And who would have thought? And not to mention the one down south. So cultural alienation is that, oh, there you go again, build something in the thick of Chinatown that looks like it can be in Maple, can be in Port Coquitlam, can be in Norfolk, right? I am a commercial producer, I actually respect a lot of this, you know, business. I think commerce drives this world, and I know how high it is, but there's so much imagination and creativity can be applied here to show some real initiative rather than just go for the normal notion of, you know, this. There's nothing wrong with this. This gives me a platform, otherwise I would be just busy doing my thing, right? This is my first time speaking in this chamber, and hopefully, you know, we come to a good decision.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for being here. So our next speaker is speaker number 43, Celine Choung, followed by Lily Choung. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, mayor and council. I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I would also like to acknowledge once again that we are standing on the unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh peoples and to honor their struggle and their story. I'm here in support of the Chinatown Concern Group and to voice my opposition to the 105 Kiefer Street proposal, which I see as inadequate, disrespectful, and damaging to the surrounding community. My name is Celine Choung, and I work at the Downton Eastside Women's Centre on the edge of Chinatown. I see the effects of gentrification every day. It seems everywhere you look, hand-painted signage and herbal shops are disappearing in favor of hip eateries and luxury boutiques far out of reach of local residents. Meanwhile, as grocery shops and other crucial amenities are swallowed up in the face of new development, rent is a rising tide, leaving isolated seniors vulnerable, precariously housed and often invisible. I hope we can include in our consideration tonight the seniors who are unable to join us because of health or mobility reasons, but for whom this conversation is paramount. When I speak for Chinatown, it is not only for people like me, the daughter of Chinese immigrants for whom Chinatown contains a world of comforting tastes, smells, and colors, and valuable ties to my childhood, culture, ancestry, and identity. It is for my elders, whom I was always taught to respect, the Chinese seniors for whom Chinatown is their community and life force. For the hundred or more Chinese seniors that visit the Downton Eastside Women's Centre each day, Chinatown is the nexus of their daily lives and essential needs. They access shops and services in their own language, nearby or in walking distance. These places and their proximity, as well as the cultural and social kinship they foster, are key to their very survival. This proposed development threatens the existence of Chinatown's most vulnerable residents by not only falling short of meeting urgent housing needs as previously articulated by their speakers, but contributing to their displacement when they have nowhere else to go. Many, if not all, of the seniors who access the Women's Centre have their housing threatened by the rising neighborhood rents, in tandem with their neighborhood becoming unrecognizable. For these Chinese seniors, this is a double displacement. Since Chinatown was created as a survival mechanism to racist and exclusionary policies, approving the 105 Kiefer proposal would only reinforce the same structures of power that have marginalized Chinese immigrants in the past. Why does land acknowledgement matter? I would like to remind everyone again that we are on unceded territory. We benefit every day from the colonial project that mandated who belonged on this land and who did not. This is the same mentality that saw indigenous land as empty and indigenous culture as inferior, the same mentality that perpetuated residential schools and decades of trauma, the same colonial and racist attitudes helped pass the Chinese Exclusion Act in the 20s, intern Japanese Canadians in the 40s, and decimated Hogan's Alley in the 70s. Our infrastructure, our neighborhoods, and our very lives as residents of the city are irrevocably bound to this history, a history of dictating to white settlers that they belonged and to indigenous, immigrant, and poor communities of color that they did not. This development proposal only proves that the same sentiments are alive and well. Poor and working-class communities of color are still being displaced by gentrification, which the proposed 105 Kiefer project will no doubt expedite. Already, Chinese seniors who face vicious discrimination and head tax, who work to labor-intensive jobs in fish factories and clothing factories, who are segregated and excluded from social and civic life, are being pushed out of the only place they were allowed to call home. Once again, they are being told they do not belong. In a city where homelessness is surging, preliminary counts of homeless count, say, 30% rise, Chinatown needs social, or sorry, inclusive and accessible social housing, not luxury condos. The chorus of protesting voices from the community should make this clear. In the words of my friend and coworker, a Chinese senior's outreach worker in a neighborhood, "No matter the language or terminology, whether revitalization or rezoning, gentrification will always affect the most vulnerable first." Gentrification in Chinatown, if unchecked, will continue to disregard the increasing marginalization of Chinese seniors and prioritize wealth over their safety, housing, and available supports. It will continue to propagate the same mentality that sees an empty parking lot as an opportunity for profit rather than a precious community cornerstone in the heart of an endangered neighborhood. I implore the mayor and council to prioritize the needs of Chinatown's vulnerable residents who give Chinatown its very history, culture, soul, and essence, and to reject the 105 Kiefer proposal, instead of working to safeguard their homes, their rights to homes, safe communities, and their right to belong. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for being here to speak. No questions, Councillor? Thank you. Our next speaker is Lily Choung. Lily Choung, speaker number 44. And she's followed by King Li, speaker 45.
Good evening, everyone. I have 1,693 real Chinese seniors.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. My name is Lily Choung. I'm an artist, I'm a painter. I regularly go to Dr. Sanyet Sand Garden. And I'm a volunteer there. Every time I volunteer, I see a lot of people coming from around the world. And they felt that Chinatown is very attractive and unique. And I also know that many of the Chinese seniors, they don't have a senior center provided by the government. So I'm in support of a senior's center there. Really thankful for the Canadian government. To acknowledge the contribution of the Chinese people in Canada. I hope that the government will pay special concern to the Chinese people who have been contributing to this place. Especially the seniors. And they have contributed so much to society.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for being here tonight. And our next speaker is King Li, speaker 45, followed by Anne Yip.
I don't know those people who are in support of... And my grandfather is a real worker. I was born in Hong Kong. And I've lived in five to six different Chinatowns. Very important to have this culture in Chinatown. Must be a happy place. So I'm in touch with those people, those concerned citizens. So we think about the context, you know, there is the cultural center and other community places. There are many, many associations of different clients and so on. Out of so many Chinatowns that I've been, I felt most uncomfortable in the Vancouver Chinatown. I wonder why. So there are a lot of businesses, but it seems to be there is a superficiality to it. So the cultural context is not really there? So I'm in support where there will be a center where the culture will be promoted and a place for people, I'm in support of it. In order to revitalize Chinatown, I think this is beneficial. So I wonder whether there is any questions from the councillors?
Okay, thank you. There's no questions for you? Next speaker is 46, Anne Yip. Is Anne Yip here? Not here? Okay. 47 is Ryan Lee. Is Ryan Lee here? Ryan Lee, not here. Is 48 Albert La? That's what I have on the list, Albert La, speaker number 48. Not here. 49 is Ronald Chung. Someone's coming in. Ronald Chung, not here. Speaker 50, Victor Leung. Victor Leung, not here. Speaker 51 is Eric Choi. Eric Choi is here, okay.
Eric Choi.
Eric Choi, welcome. James Yu is next. Okay.
Wait, wait, testing, testing.
We hear you loud and clear.
My name is Eric Choi. I've been here, a new Canadian, for 18 days. This is my landing paper, and of course... He asked me to sing. He asked me to sing. Anyway, okay, this is my landing paper. I've been here 30 days and 30 years. I've been Vancouverized since then, so I paid property tax from day one. Chinatown is the best Chinatown in the world. I've been to so many Chinatowns in North America, Australia, Africa, Malaysia, so I'd like our mayor, our councillor, to carefully handle our beautiful Chinatown. On this one, we know that this is a rezoning public hearing, but in fact, I can say it's additional zoning application. It's not rezoning. So 20 feet above 90 feet is roughly about 31.1%. Okay, and because of the setback, roughly, there are about 25% additional space for the entire project. But on the commercial weather, this 25% up in the air will be 50% or 60% of the weather. Agree? So if we approve the rezoning, what do we get? Senior homes, 25 units? I think it's a right by number, a check. What's the four area? One floor? Out of the 12-story, it's less than 10%. And the senior homes, all of them are on the lowest level of the building, so commercial weather may be even less than 10%. So we are giving more than 50% of the additional weather to get back, less than 10% or slightly more than 10% of the weather. Less than ten percent or slightly more than ten percent of the weather. On the cultural, so this is my fact, I don't put up my opinion yet. My cultural and recreational space, I agree that give you, give us below-market rent. But the space, I understand, is the most expensive space on the project. So, for example, if the market rent is ten thousand dollars per month, you know market, fifty percent, five thousand. Do you think any charitable organization can afford to rent such expensive, below-market space? So you, you cannot afford to rent, you give up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Third one I'd like to mention, Mr. Carpa. I think it's nice to provide more residential units for people to sleep. But look at the figure, are we providing enough car park store for the car park, for the cars to sleep in the night? Okay, for example, nine-story, ninety car park stores, it looks right. For twelve-story, one hundred and twenty car park stores proportionally is right. But when we have ninety stores for a nine-story building, it's a problem. So when you proportionally provide the same number, you amplify or enlarge the problem. At least that is my opinion or it's the fact that I've tried to bring up today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Right on time. Councillor Carr, you have questions?
I do have a question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am interested in your, your evaluation that the upper floors will contain a lot of value. And I think you said fifty percent of the value estimated of the project. I'm wondering if, how you have ascertained that? How have you figured that out?
Oh, by quantities away or the property appraiser. I talked to a professional before I come.
And they, and they indicate those professionals in the real estate industry?
Apart from your question, you know, I think it's general knowledge, you know. Every apartment, the price goes up one floor, it's fine. So you can, simple mathematics.
I am, I am interested though in, the reason why I'm asking you this is because in the report
Yes.
our staff have stated that there is, they've concluded, and I'm quoting our report, that there would be no increase in the land value generated by the rezoning. And that's why there's no community amenity contributions that are being asked for. So I'm, so I'm just wondering about how you, how you think we should verify, in your opinion, that there, there is value associated with the extra floors.
Oh, you can go deeper, you know, with the property appraiser. But I'm sure that is the figure.
Okay.
I mean, this must be a big jump in the general average.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, that's all your questions. Thank you for being here. Speaker number fifty-two, James Yu, followed by Dick Man Sui.
Good evening, your worshiped councillors. My name is James Yu. I'm speaking here tonight in support of the one oh five Kiefer Street project. I'll start with Hercules, Heraclitus, a great philosopher, is quote as saying, "Change is the only constant in life." If we look back in the early days of Vancouver, when Gassy Jack first set foot on this shore, the settlement was nothing more than some single-story office buildings and mostly ramshackle wooden huts and old buildings for the mostly man settlers. The town was surrounded by the giant forest of red cedar and Douglas fir trees. Fast forward this to the present days of Vancouver's Chinatown. No one would have foreseen that restaurants in the heart of Chinatown, namely the buffet, would have a seating capacity of one thousand patrons in one setting and a parking structure that can hold as many cars as the guests drive in. Having been involved and working in Chinatown continuously for twenty-seven years, since nineteen eighty-six to two thousand and fourteen, I have seen many changes take place from the height of vibrancy of the seventies to the gradual falling out of favor or fashion, if you want to call it, of the mid-nineties and even up till just recently. I do feel that we need an injection of new ideas and capital to this area. The Dr. Sun Yat-sen garden and the park was a great introduction to the survival of this area. So as the Chinese Cultural Centre and is relatively near built, the Library Royal Museum. This organisation helped to maintain the identity and the heritage of the area residents. But I also feel that we should bring more vibrancy to the area by increasing the density and the multi-use of the area. Such is the case of this proposal of one oh five Kiefer Street. I think the developer has made many sincere efforts to work with all the interest parties involved. And where it is located, there is so much open space in front of the project that even though building height may be a concern, it should not have been a liability for this progress in accommodation of higher density. One more thing, there is a native tree of China planted within the confines of Sun Yat-sen Park, a dawn redwood tree, Muthusacoya, that can grow up to hundred and sixty feet in height. So my question is, does this particular tree worries about its ultimate height that it would grow up to be? I think nature would take its course. To end this clip, I should quote the Chinese sage, Lao Tzu, the founding philosopher of Taoism. He said, "Life is a series of natural and spontaneous changes. Don't resist them. That only creates sorrows. Let reality be reality. Let things flow forward in a natural ways. Maybe after all, between the east and the west, there really is no difference among us." Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for being here. No questions for you? Thank you. And our next speaker is fifty-three, Dick Man Sui.
Yes.
Followed by Tio Hing Pang. Welcome.
Yeah, my honourable honoursome.
If you could move closer to the microphone, that would be great.
An honourable councilor. My name is Solomon E. M. Siu. And I moved to Canada from Panama in nineteen sixty-six. I am writing this letter to express my support for the proposed development at one oh five Kiefer Street. In my, thank you. In my fifty-one years here, I have seen how the population had increased while housing continued to lack behind. We need to see higher density in the city to keep space with the population growing, growing. That we are seeing here. Chinatown is a wonderful area for the for these there are currently a loss of social activities. Not take place in Chinatown, but with very very little available space to have these activities. The proposal development for one oh five Kiefer will provide will provide us with new space and allow us to continue practicing our activity. Our cultural activity. There's already proceeding with a one-to-twelve story building along Kiefer and his things. And the development will not be out of place. The proposal at one oh five Kiefer will improve Chinatown by providing social spaces and providing a boost to the local business who will benefit from the new residents. Thank you for providing me with the opportunity to comment on this project. I hope that mayor and honoursome will agree with my, with me and approve of this project at public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight and sharing your views with council. And our next speaker is fifty-four, Tiu Hing Pang. Followed by Anita Mac. Welcome.
我翻译
Dear mayor and councillors.
我的老友记
My dear friends.
我本人彭少卿
I am Peng Shao Xing.
我嚟咗温哥华廿几年啦
I've been in Vancouver for over twenty years. I'm very happy in Vancouver. I receive a lot of benefits because I'm a senior.
居住嘅环境都好
The living condition is really good for me.
我好开心啦
I live happily here. And I hope that other seniors will also enjoy the same kind of benefits that I'm receiving.
奇发街一零五嘅发展
One oh five Kiefer Street development
非常之好
is a very good development. Twenty-five housing units for seniors.
我全力支持这个计划
I'm a hundred percent in support of this project. So, so I hope that there will be a cultural senior centre.
有些官员咧不想发展
There are some officials who do not want to redevelop Chinatown. It is actually, Chinatown has become a haven for drug addicts. I think they should not stay in Chinatown.
游客不敢来唐人街行嘅
A lot of the visitors and tourists don't want to come to Chinatown anymore.
个个都好怕
They were just afraid of the environment in Chinatown. All seniors would like to have a, a centre for them. Good friends, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. 多谢，多谢 So our next speaker, fifty-five, is Anita Mac. Anita Mac here? Not here? Fifty-six is Nan Shuo Zhou. Followed by Ming Ming Ju.
Good evening.
Good evening.
尊敬的市长，尊敬的各位议员
Dear councillor, dear mayor and councillors.
我支持修这个building
I'm in support of this project. Because Chinatown needs redevelopment. This site has been vacant for many years. Being vacant doesn't help Chinatown.
我的旅游有三点
I have three points to make.
支持的旅游啊有三点
There are three reasons for my support.
第一点，唐人街需要发展
Number one, Chinatown needs redevelopment. Chinatown should not keep its current status. Vancouver is, is, is changing. There are many new buildings in Vancouver.
那么唐人街咧，也是温哥华的一部分
And Chinatown is part of Vancouver.
所以呢，唐人街也是要发展的
So Chinatown also needs redevelopment. After I live in Vancouver, actually Chinatown is behind.
很多人都离开了唐人街
Many people leave Chinatown. Because it's not redeveloped according to our needs. And it's also not very appropriate for young people to live there. This is the main reason why I am in support of this project. So I've heard many people expressing their ideas today. Many young people is against the building. Many seniors are in support of this project.
为什么呢?
Why? I think it's because there will be many housing units. And that would help the low-income seniors. That is the second point I'm making why I'm in support because there will be housing units for low-income seniors. Because what is proposed, there will be a centre in this building. The seniors do not have a recreation place for activities. We need a gathering place. And we need to have many activities in a centre like this. So the developer is promising that a centre will be built. This is the third point, why I'm in support of this project. My conclusion is that Chinatown needs redevelopment. And of course, we have to maintain this heritage. There should be a balance. I've been here fifteen years. Thirty-five years ago, I was in UBC. For two years. At that point, Chinatown is really good. Especially for Hastings is not so deteriorated. But in Chinatown is not doing well at all. So I'm in support of the city to redevelop Chinatown.
谢谢大家.
Thank you.
谢谢你. Thank you very much. No questions for you. Thank you for coming. And next speaker, fifty-seven, Ming Ming Ju. Followed by Ju Xiang Chu.
My name is Zhu Mingming. I'm the president of Senior Chinese Society of Vancouver. Okay, 我们有一千个会员. We have one thousand members. One thousand members, yes. All the members in support. Support this plan. In support of this plan. At the twelve-story building. The reasons why we are in support. So there were two points I wanted to make about Chinatown. You have to keep its heritage. Because by doing so, you can attract a lot of people to come. 第二个方面就是Chinatown必须要发展. The second point is that Chinatown needs to be redeveloped. The rate of the redevelopment Chinatown is not fast enough. Especially the young people leave Chinatown. So between the two elements, to redevelop Chinatown, but also to keep its heritage. So we think that having this twelve-story building is fulfilling maintaining this balance. Yes, 它并没有破坏周围的那个特色. So we don't think it's destroying the characteristics of the area. And also has many small businesses. Yeah, business,所以它就能够吸引那些人来. It would attract people to come. Because it's twelve-story high, so the mass is smaller. Basement, basement is smaller. There is more space between the pedestrian and also other buildings around it. In the future, it's going to attract more people to come. The other point I'm trying to make is regarding the seniors, and of course, young people also will grow old. And for seniors, we need a place for activities. 我们来学英文呐. To learn English. 唱歌啊,跳舞啊. To sing, to dance. 交朋友啊. To socialize. We need a space. So the building being proposed is suggesting to have a centre like that. It will be the only centre in Chinatown. The other communities in Vancouver, they have their own senior centre. So the seniors have been coming to our association for activities. 但是现在他们不能来. They cannot come anymore. In the last few years, they have difficulty to walk. 而我们的office呢,是在二楼的. Our office is on the second floor. So they have difficulty climbing the stairs. 那么他就只好放弃来活动了. So they have given up coming to our place. Actually, they're fine otherwise, but you know, it's difficult for them to walk.
Okay, you're just about your five minutes.
So now it's on the first floor, so it's really suitable for the seniors. And also, it's excellent to have twenty-five. My last point? We really hope that this will speed up the redevelopment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and our next speaker is Chu Ji Xiang. Followed by Hua Li Yan. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and esteemed members of city council. My name is Li Jianhua. I'm a member of the Chinese Senior Society in Vancouver. I'm currently seventy-seven years old, and I have been living in Chinatown for about twenty-four years, and have been volunteering for over ten years. I mainly help take care of other seniors, bring them to see their doctors, and also their physiotherapy appointments. I also help them do blood pressure measurements, and also organize tea events and other community gatherings. With this experience, I can say I'm very familiar with Chinatown and its residents. I've also witnessed the ups and downs of Chinatown. I believe the city must listen to what our seniors, many of whom have lived here for over twenty years, have to say. We, the residents of Chinatown, can truly represent what's best for Chinatown. I believe many of these arguments coming from many of the younger generation are misguided. They believe that building a new property in Chinatown will ruin its image. Instead, I believe that building this new property could help revitalize Chinatown and wipe away the old and worn-out look. I strongly disagree with how they say that this building is an outlier. The developer has spent countless hours on improving the appearance of this building to ensure that Chinatown maintains its traditional Chinese character. I will speak in Cantonese. Chinatown needs more developments like this one to improve the seniors and residents' living space, and to provide seniors with more support. We should not let these concerned groups attempt to represent us. We cannot let them stop the revitalization of Chinatown. The developer has redone their proposal many times, and currently, we do not, we think that this is in keeping with the traditional character of Chinatown.
So you need to wrap up your, over your five minutes.
We support the twelve-story proposal as is, and implore the councillors to approve this project.
Okay, thank you very much. And we have our next speaker is Liu Xinjen. Liu Xinjen followed by Su Wei Yi.
市长先生.
Dear mayor.
各位.
And councillors.
各位朋友.
And dear friends.
大家晚上好.
Good evening. I came from Shanghai.
我今年已经八十岁了.
I am eighty years old. And I'm one of the members of the Chinese Senior Association. So just now, the president has already expressed our views. We're in support of what the developers is proposing.
对齐化街建筑一座大楼.
In support of building a building on 105 Kever Street. Like many of my senior friends. We like Vancouver. We also really appreciate Chinatown. Because there is culture in Chinatown, our culture.
有中国的元素.
And also the Chinese characteristics in Chinatown. We went to Chinatown for shopping frequently. We also like to go to Dr. Sun Yat-sen Garden. To our respectful Dr. Sun Yat-sen. But what is lacking in Chinatown is a seniors' place. So now we heard that the developer is proposing building, a building here.
我们非常高兴.
We are very happy about that. So it's making Chinatown even better.
唐人街会更美丽.
Chinatown will become more beautiful.
大家会更喜欢.
And many people will like Chinatown more. We are particularly happy that there is a centre for the seniors. And also many units for the seniors. So it will provide a very good environment for us to live in Chinatown.
良好的环境.
Very nice environment. So we hope that the city will speed up this redevelopment. So let's start building this.
早一天建成.
And get it quickly done.
早一点让大家享受.
So that we can all enjoy the new building. Thank you.
谢谢, thank you very much. And no questions for you. We have our next speaker, sixty-one, Su Wei Yi. Is Su Wei Yi here? Su Wei Yi is not here. Sixty-two is King Yong Wong, Wong King Yong. Not here. Okay, Mr. Wong? Followed by Nathaniel Lo is the next. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor and our councillor.
I'll be speaking in Chinese. So there's nothing wrong about a new building, but not to forget there is actually the memorial plaza next to it. One side is the Chinese Cultural Centre.
我们有中山公园。
And also Dr. Sun Yat-sen Garden. All these buildings have been around for a long time, and they are lower buildings. The building being proposed is way too high in this context.
但是我不是反对发展上。
I'm not really against redevelopment.
发展红岩街，这点比较。
And not against redeveloping Chinatown. But on this particular site.
认为不是那么适当。
It's not appropriate. It would destroy the, the history that we have built in Chinatown. It will be some sort of being obtrusive to the plaza and also to the Cultural Centre.
就有好大的分别。
It will make it very strange and odd. So what I'm proposing, it's, a building is not the issue. It is already purchased. And of course, they want to redevelop for profit. The federal government is acknowledging Chinatown in North America. As a historical site. So it's a special place.
Okay.
Should maintain the, the current, current status in Chinatown. So we propose that the city should re-discuss with the developer? Maybe to buy it back from them? About fifty to sixty feet tall building? So for local Chinese seniors?
重要有个价钱在这，不是老人屋，就听日，几多钱就几多钱咁，有low rent for senior.
A low rent for seniors.
Okay, that's your time limit?
I'm talking about the whole building.
Yeah, it's not, put up, 好多三层，就俾个廿五的单位你，唔够。
Twenty-five units for, for, for low-income seniors are not enough.
Okay, that is your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you for coming. Our next speaker is Nathaniel Lo.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I greet you with the powerful closing words of my good friend, King Mong Chan. Everyone, those online, all of you outside, say with me, people over profit. People over profit.
People over profit.
People over profit.
What an amazing idea, right? My name is Nathaniel Lo. I'm a resident of Vancouver, volunteer with Chinatown Concern Group, and I'm opposed to the 105 Kiefer rezoning. I'd like to first acknowledge and recognize that we are on the stolen, unceded territories of indigenous people, specifically the Squamish, Musqueam, and Salawitut people. We stand in solidarity for indigenous sovereignty, for their right to take their livelihoods and destinies in their own hands, for their right to social and economic and political self-determination, especially in the struggle against the dispossession of land and home. My grandfather, K. Lo, immigrated as a paper son without his family from Canton during an era marked by Chinese exclusion and anti-Asian racism. While Yee Yee was an immigrant, he was also a worker. Like many others from his village, he worked in grocery markets as a butcher. He proudly toiled and labored with his own two hands to make a better future for himself and his kin. 105 Kiefer has been, become a real struggle for Chinese people to assert their own identity after decades of racial discrimination in this country. But also, 105 Kiefer has become a real struggle for the economic fate of poor Chinatown residents, for working-class people throughout the city. Matters of race and economics are inextricably linked in the complicated discussions of urban planning, housing, income, and culture. But we've seen this before. We've seen this before when the anti-Asian riots broke out over growing fears of Japanese, South Asian, and Chinese immigration. Led by the Asiatic Exclusion League and labor leaders, thousands marched on Chinatown and Japantown as bricks and stones crashed through the windows of targeted Asian-owned storefronts and businesses. Many of these families built their homes and businesses with hopes of economic prosperity in the only neighborhoods they were allowed to live in, and still, they were attacked. Yes, race and economics are inextricably linked. We've seen this before. We've seen this before when here tonight, four revisions and over two years later, BD's Market Condo Project in the heart of Chinatown still threatens to raise rents and push out low-income immigrant residents. We've seen this before. But no, we know this time, we will take matters into our own hands. Like the many residents and store owners of Japantown that banded together, armed themselves with knives, stones, and bricks to defend their homes from white supremacist economic violence during the riots, we will take matters into our own hands. We will take matters into our own hands at the ballot box, into our own hands at the steps of City Hall, and into our own hands in the streets. We will continue to organize, and we will not stop until we take full control of our own destiny. So with that, I urge you, Mayor and City Council, follow the leadership of the many Chinatown residents, community members, 2,630 petition signers, and ensure that Chinatown and Vancouver is thriving and affordable for all. Reject BD's 105 Kiefer application, acquire the site, build 100% social housing at welfare pension rates with public community space. Thank you.
Councillor Carr? Councillor Carr has questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for coming. And I just have a main question, which is, I've heard very clearly and I've read the petitions that have come in, so that I know that it's, and you stated, the goal is for us, the city, to facilitate the purchase of the land by senior governments. If that's not possible, is there a fallback position of the Chinatown Concern Group in terms of it still being owned by the developer, but a percentage, an increased percentage of the housing for seniors at, as you say, welfare rate? Is there, or is it 100%, must be 100%?
We are unwavering in the belief that this needs to be 100% social housing. There's a deep, deep need in the province. We have a homelessness crisis, housing crisis, and it's, it's really a matter of political will.
Well, on, on more than one government's part.
Yep, definitely. We ask all of our leaders to take responsibility.
Right, okay, that's great, thank you, I mean, that's clear.
Questions from Councillor DeGenova.
I just had one quick question, follow-up to Councillor Carr's question. You mentioned that you are unwavering in your belief that it should be 100% social housing, however, in absence of support from the federal government and the provincial government on that front, and that's one of the reasons that Vancouver has now the Vancouver Affordable Housing Agency, and there are certain projects that can be achieved through that, however, some of them are mixed-use, they'll be mixed-use projects. So I'm wondering, would, I mean, if it comes down to it, because the site is privately owned, this isn't one of our Vancouver sites where we, council, can make the decision. The developer can choose to probably build within 90 feet and build luxury condos if they want. So in follow-up to Councillor Carr's question, do you, do you believe that the site should be gated up? I'm just trying to, I'm wondering sort of how you think we're going to achieve 100% social housing on this site?
Again, I, I call on all of the leadership of our city councillors, our provincial government, our federal government, find a way. I think we're clear, the community is clear in our demands, and it is, it is your responsibility to follow through.
So would you rather see it fenced up until that time? I mean, we did do a partnership with the provincial, federal government, and the city of Vancouver to achieve the Southeast Vancouver Senior Centre, and it's taken over a decade just to get one senior centre in Colarny in Southeast Vancouver. So I'm, I'm trying to weigh what some people are saying about revitalization, whether or not they're in support of this project, and sort of leaving this area gated up.
Is there a question there, Councillor DeGenova?
Yeah, I, I asked part of it, and I was continuing before you interrupted me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I am the chair of this meeting, Councillor DeGenova, and I'm keeping council on task. You are to ask questions in the five minutes that you have.
Do we have a certain time amount on?
I'll go to Councillor Carr. Councillor Carr, did you have more questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do have one other question. My question was.
Sorry, what was your question?
My question was.
Would we rather see it gated up?
For the provincial and federal government, have, has your group, the Chinatown Concern Group, actually reached out to the federal government and the provincial government? Have you tried to put together a meeting with those leaders and our city staff or city councillors here at the city of Vancouver?
If you've read our petition, we directed towards all three levels of government.
I'm just asking if you've tried to put anything together yourselves?
Well, we've, we've definitely sent our petition, you can, yeah, we'd love to meet with federal and provincial leaders as well as city councillors to make this happen.
You'd love to, but I'm asking, have you reached out to them?
We would love to do that.
So have you, to this date, reached out to them, yes or no?
I think he's answered that question a couple times now, so.
He said he'd love to, I, I didn't know if that meant you hadn't yet.
We, we've reached out to provincial and federal leaders.
Going to Councillor Carr for questions now, thank you very much. Councillor Carr, you have the floor.
Yes, okay. A personal privilege.
Councillor DeGenova, there's no such thing. Do you have a point of order?
Yes, there's a point of order under 5.2, and you're chairing this meeting, and I'm asking you to ask the people, especially in the balcony, to be respectful who choose to heckle during my questions of other speakers, not just to follow up.
Councillor DeGenova, thank you, I'll, thank you for your point of order. I will remind everyone here to be respectful of the speaker who has the floor, and for councillors not to repeatedly ask questions of speakers who are not required to answer questions posed by council as well. So it doesn't suit us in the time that we have here to be repeating questions when it's at the discretion of the speaker to decide whether they answer or not. Councillor Carr, you have the floor.
Yes, I do. Thank you, yeah. Mr. Lo, I'm interested in your response to a statement that was raised by one of the previous speakers who characterized the input that's coming to us through speakers as being polarized between youth who are opposed to the project and seniors who are in support of the project. So I'm interested in your response, if that's, if you see an age differentiation in the responses.
No, I don't. I believe that all people, regardless of age, want affordable and living accommodations, secure, and they're right. I think it's unfortunate that people have been pitting young versus old, and we're here to say that we want social housing for all.
And members of your group, the Chinatown Concern Group, are there people of all ages in your group?
Yes, I'm a volunteer, I'm younger, and we also have senior members, you've met many of them who spoke last time, there, there were several in the beginning.
Great, thank you very much.
And Councillor Meggs has questions.
Yeah, just, just a quick one, so there's a statement in the staff report that says, "The application has become a symbol of the struggle of the Chinatown community and the city as a whole to define the future for Vancouver's Chinatown." And I take it from your remarks, that's also your view?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and so, previous speaker, I don't know if you heard her, Yuli Chan, was identified as coming from the Chinatown Action Group, we had a similar exchange, and I asked her to outline some steps that were longer term, rather than just a yes or no on this, that she would recommend, and she sketched some that her group had been working on. Are they similar suggestions that you would make, I mean, if we're wrestling with this larger picture?
Yes, we, we wholeheartedly support Chinatown Action Group's plan. We've been involved, our members have been involved with that process. It's been over a year in the making. There have been regular meetings with residents, figuring out what, what are people concerned about, and issues of social isolation, of affordable housing, social housing, transportation, issues of racism, those, those definitely float to the top of people's concerns.
Whatever the outcome is, that's not the end of the road for your group, and you would be working on similar kinds of propositions with them?
Yes, of course.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, that's all your questions. Thank you for being here tonight. And our next speaker. Our next speaker is Peter K. Wong. Peter K. Wong is here, followed by 66 Gordy Wong. Evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, council members, and city staff. My name is Peter Wong. I'm here as a concerned citizen. I oppose the rezoning application of 105 Kiefer Street. I was born and raised in Vancouver and the youngest son of a father who was a UBC civil engineer graduate in 1948, but who cannot apply for a professional career because of racial discrimination at that time. Instead, he and his brother carried on the family custom tailor shop, which recently celebrated its 100th year anniversary in Chinatown. I was fortunate to grow up across the street from Queen Elizabeth Park, and Dad considered Queen Elizabeth Park to be the best front lawn and lawn and garden in the city. It was the best city in the world and definitely one that embraced multiculturalism, culture, and heritage. I remember my daily visits to the family tailor shop, growing up in Chinatown. I would attend English school from 9:00 AM till 3:00, and then take the Main Street bus to attend Munquang Chinese School on Pendergai with my siblings and cousins. I remember all the merchants selling colorful goods, the strong smells of the Chinese herbs and salted fish, barbecue meat shops with spotlights, red heat lamps proudly displaying the products, the black ink and Chinese calligraphy, Marco Polo nightclubs, smorgasbords, busy streets of families, even running and jumping on the Purple Meadow cargo grates on the sidewalks to make loud noises and scare people down from all sides. All this within the three blocks radius of our daily walk to Modernise on Pender Street after Chinese School. And of course, many of us can remember Pierre Trudeau dining at the Anon Café on Kiefer Street, as, but did you know, I mean, Carrie and Raymond may know this, Carrie Lester B. Pearson was a guest at WK Garden in 1965, hosted by John David Eaton of the Eaton's department store, and was served ragout of Long Island duckling and B.C. oysters with mushrooms. Stories like these are the reason why Chinatown is so rich in history and is now recognized as a national historic site, like the neighboring historical community of Gastown. But ironically, Vancouver's Chinatown community is now on Canada's Top 10 endangered list. But ironically, Vancouver's Chinatown community is now on Canada's top-10 endangered list. Are we wrong to assume that as a national historical site, there are protections in place against this type of development that completely changed Yautia? Neighborhoods should be protected from rezoning of heights and density in order to minimize urban sprawl and gentrification. Without protective measures, we will continue to have voices challenging for the relevance that all communities bring to our city. I'm not living in the past or trying to live in the dark ages. I completely understand development is required so that these neighborhoods can be maintained to meet modern standards. Hopefully, it's not too much to ask developers to consider the historical value of neighborhoods that they wish to infiltrate. Hopefully, we can, can they not see a fit to embrace architectural design that enhances the era by applying a historical review instead of following patterns of instigating maximum-density towering structures? Let's not take a risk on approving this rezoning application of 105 Kiefer Street. I think it's also important to acknowledge the BD Family Foundation for having a long rich history in our community, for contributing generously to organizations supporting health, education, safety-based projects, both locally and around the world. Hopefully, the BD Development Division can also apply the same mindset, leadership, and vision to Vancouver's Chinatown heritage, culture, and equally long-rich history. If we look at Amsterdam and Denmark for successful examples of old meets new, minimalist modern structures live right next to heritage structures, uniting the ideologies of ancient traditions and New World thinking. You won't find architecture that will compromise the skylines in those places. The citizens won't have it, and those in charge of city planning wouldn't even dream of it. Our city has seen exponential growth and development in recent years. It's been a windfall for those in the front lines of the real estate industry. Fortunes have been made, many businesses, private citizens have benefited from the rapid expansion that we see here in recent years. Yet homelessness, affordability housing for seniors, and many others, is becoming an unstoppable problem. It's time to rethink the approach to development around the Chinatown neighborhood. In this time of social upheaval, as we hear the populist reframe of "everything matters", may my voice join the chorus of united voices that want to bring attention to the importance of consideration, conservation of our historical neighborhoods. We all know how that song goes, "You don't know what you've got until it's gone." Please hear the voices of us and who live and love our Chinatown community. Please oppose the rezoning of application 105 Kiefer Street. Chinatown matters. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you. So, thank you for being here. Speaker number 66 is Gordy Wong. Is Gordy Wong here? Gordy Wong not here. Speaker 67 is Linay Sun, followed by Rebecca Hartley. Good evening.
Before going further, I wish to acknowledge the unceded traditional and ancestral Coast Tlish territories of the Squamish, Swilletut, and the Musqueam nations. Good morning, Mayor and council. My name is Linay Sun, and I am a coordinator at the Carnegie Action, Carnegie Community Action Project in the downtown east side. So I'm here today to oppose the 105 Kiefer project and to support the Chinatown Concern Group. Yesterday, the representative from B.C. Housing called $700 for rent incredibly affordable. This is simply untrue for low-income people. Chinatown in the downtown east side is one of Canada's poorest neighborhoods, with about 9,000 to 10,000 people on welfare and disability, most with only $375 a month for shelter, and with about 4,000 seniors with about $432 a month for rent or less. Most residents have only about $325 to $372 a month for shelter. Most residents are already barely surviving as it is. Residents surviving on social assistance of $610 and paying the average SRO rent of $548 have only about $62 a month, which turns out to be about $2 a day left for everything else. That includes money for food, hygiene, laundry, and transportation. So imagine, only $2 a day. So how will they be able to afford $700 rent? Whether it's eight units or 25 units at safer rents, $700 for rent is completely unimaginable for many residents. This development project does not help Chinatown and downtown east side residents. Vancouver is in the middle of a housing and homelessness crisis. It is the worst that it has ever been, and gentrification plays a significant role. Recently, the 2017 Metro Vancouver Homeless Count was released. The count found a steep increase in homelessness across Metro Vancouver, with 828 more people identified as homeless in 2017 compared to in 2014, which represents a 30% increase in homelessness and the highest number to date. In the city of Vancouver, there are now over 2,100 people who are homeless, an increase of almost 300 people since last year. Low-income people across the city and the province are continuously evicted and displaced by rising rents and gentrification. We don't need more luxury condos, we need social housing at welfare and pension rates now. Housing is a human right. Additionally, BD's project would be an inappropriate use of culturally sensitive site. The Kiefer Triangle is the most culturally sensitive area in the neighborhood, and it's named number two on the National Trust for Canada's top-10 most endangered sites in 2016. Vancouver has a longstanding history of colonization and white supremacy. This land we stand on is stolen. Historically, Chinatown and downtown east side have been a place where the most marginalized were pushed to. In resistance, these groups built strong, thriving communities only to be threatened and eradicated by the same systems that pushed them there in the first place. Hogan's Alley and Vancouver's only black community was destroyed, and now Vancouver's historic Chinatown is also at threat of being destroyed. From Hogan's Alley to Chinatown, many seniors and residents living in Chinatown in the downtown east side have lived through, have lived through the oppression that was orchestrated by the government. It's time that the city actively listens to those who are the most vulnerable in the city, instead of those who hold institutional power and privilege, such as these wealthy developers. There are survivors of the Chinese Exclusion Acts and head hacks, survivors of colonization, there are survivors of racism and displacement who continue to face discrimination each day, who have come here today to tell you to oppose this project. If you don't listen to the most vulnerable and marginalized people in the community, your formal apologies and public promises of reconciliation are empty, and frankly, they're insulting. Do not tell us you care about being inclusive. Do not tell us that you care about Chinatown. Do not tell us you care about, more about people than profits. You need to show us. I support Chinatown Chrisones Group's demands, which are, one, for the city to reject BD's 105 Kiefer project, two, that no market housing will be developed at this site, and, third, for all levels of government to acquire the 105 Kiefer site, fourth, for 100% social housing at welfare, pension, and shelter rates, and lastly, for an intergenerational, multi-use community space with an emphasis on seniors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Thanks for coming tonight. Next speaker, 68 Rebecca Hartley, and followed by Devon Hassack, 69. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Rebecca, and I'm here tonight to provide support for the proposed rezoning of 105 Kiefer Street. As a resident of Vancouver for the past six years, I've spent a fair amount of time in Chinatown, taking in its festivals, patronizing local restaurants and businesses, and doing my best to absorb its rich culture. I hope you feel unqualified when I say this building would be a welcome addition to the vibrant neighborhood. It's my belief that BD's proposal not only answers the community's need for more housing, but also respects its rich history. In contrast, isolating people based on their income or social status not only fails to help improve their lives of the most vulnerable, it actually leaves them more soft. The mixture of housing that is proposed creates a space where people of various backgrounds and ages will interact with, care for, and learn from one another. Important to this is that the proposed, proposal demonstrates a respect for the character of Chinatown. The overall design of the building is thoughtful and will fit well with the neighborhood. The ground floor is open and inviting, providing smaller retail spaces, which are better suited to local businesses, as opposed to big-box retailers, allowing for the tradition of local, family-owned businesses to remain possible. Importantly, this layout establishes a physical connection to the Chinatown Memorial Plaza through the building, providing those within the opportunity to connect with the memory of those who sacrificed so much for us all. It's not just the departed that will be honored. Respect is conveyed through the amenities and living spaces for the community's seniors, so that they are allowed not only to maintain their connection with one another, but also with the community. Because the community of Chinatown is so important, it's essential to note that this proposal does not take anything away from it. What currently sits on this site provides no shelter, nor does it provide community space. The existing site represents selfishness and a culture that did not respect those who lived here. Approving this proposal will not only add to the richness of the community, but to those that visit it. It will show caring to a community that has been taken for granted. Given how much those who built Chinatown had to struggle, it is easy to see why the future of this site is something many are passionate about. I believe those who helped shape Chinatown would be proud that this site has responded so well to the input of the community. It has created a proposal that better reflects what Chinatown is, while still holding to that promise of building something for the future, for one's family to have better. I know that many have spoken about what they fantasize may happen if this proposal isn't approved, that it could be sold as it is and essentially, eventually turned into social housing. However, the cold truth is, there is a different alternative, which is far more likely. Just next door, at 137 Kiefer Street, the applicant has simply submitted a development application, which allows for a nine-story building. That site will offer no community spaces and no housing for seniors. While I applaud the new building at 137 Kiefer, BD's group has chosen a tougher road, demonstrating the care they show for the, for the community of Chinatown. Anyone that doubts this simply has to look at how many times this design has been refined, how many years the process has taken, and how this proposal will not only fit in, but benefit Chinatown for the foreseeable future. I urge you, those who labored for their future, for their families to come, please don't give in to the selfishness of those who want the past, approve this project for those of today, and more importantly, for those families to come in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. You have a question from Councillor Jang.
Thank you for coming. You'd mentioned in your submission that if this is turned down, BD would come in with a nine-story building that would have no amenities.
Well, more than it's a possibility, like, this is, in the current zoning of this area, that's something that could happen, and something that has happened right in the area. So, I mean, as it is right now, they're showing that they, they want to give something back to the community in the form of community space and space for seniors, which I think is something, it's really valuable for that neighborhood.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for being here to speak. No more questions. Speaker number 69 is Devon Hassack, followed by 70 Janie Leung.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You always manage to get my name right, and it's a tricky one. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First, I want to make clear, I'm not a realtor or an employee, employee of a development company. Short, I'm not paid to be here, unless you want to count the free food provided at rezoning open house events. With that said, why I'm here today is not to speak only in favor of this rezoning, but by extension, in support of Chinatown, the downtown east side, and the city of Vancouver as a whole. This rezoning should be improved, as it represents the progressive thinking Vancouver is born to the world. I know there is a deep concern in the city for those who through no personal failing of their own, have ended up neglected by their fellow man. However, there is misguided belief that the best way to support those in need is to segregate them into one neighborhood of Vancouver. We must remember the lessons of the failed St. Louis project, Pruitt-Agou, which has shown us what happens when we isolate vulnerable people into one neighborhood, rather than incorporating them into a diverse society. It is obvious that by introducing housing for people at various levels of income, we create interaction between those very people, and that produces a more caring community. This building would see that idea put into action. By turning contaminated land that currently sits wasted as a parking lot into housing, we're not creating gentrification, nor are we shutting the door on real human need. Rather, we create an opportunity for an exchange of culture, ideas, and the responsibility to look after one another. Council can see examples of how this will be achieved by looking at the seniors' housing that has been provided, in the seniors' community room, that with its slight sightline to the memorial, honor those very seniors and the memories of those no longer with us. This is not a case of stuffing people away to be forgotten about. Rather, with its connected corridors, street views, and glass walls, everyone in this building, and even those walking on the street, will be shown the history of the neighborhood and its residents. I worry deeply about what it says about us as Vancouverites if council rejects this rezoning. Do we really only speak about caring for each other, rather than putting into action? Are we content to say there are poor districts and affluent ones, and they should never blend? And of course, forget about the middle class, they're not wanted in this city at all. How horrible is it that in a city crying out for homes, we sit here arguing about whether our neighborhood, as vibrant as Chinatown, can survive the growth that is already occurring? Quickly, I want to add that in a city that has a horrible housing emergency, with its youth being driven out, it's tragic to know that this proposed addition of more homes has taken three years to reach this point. I know this is due to many conditions, some of which have even made this proposal better. However, it's important to know that part of this delay is due to the time city staff has taken to move this forward. Let me make clear, I am not attacking the hard work of city staff that they have done, rather, I feel this is a cry for help, that there is a need for better funding, and a desperate need for reinforcements, as there is a clear understaffing problem. I could provide many examples of why I feel city staffers spread thin, but frankly, they'd probably distract from this great rezoning and push me over my time limit. Ultimately, though, what is gained by rejecting this rezoning? Is it better that 25 seniors will remain homeless? Then instead, under existing policy, a slightly market-rate, slightly smaller market-rate project, roughly nine floors, will still be built, with no requirement for any community funding? With money that could be spent building social and shelter-rate housing on vacant, city-owned lands, be best spent on acquiring this land? Does anyone believe, really believe, that our current premier will allow her party to once again support Vancouver and its social policies, instead of demanding a referendum on any attempt to raise the needed funds? The reality is simple, this is a well-thought-out project that should go ahead, and frankly, everyone stands to gain from it. This site will reflect harmony, moderation, and those who made the ultimate sacrifice to ensure this community, city, and country became something greater than it was. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mr. Mayor and council members, and please, don't condemn the people of Chinatown to enforce income segregation.
Thank you. Those are, that's your time, and you have no questions. Next speaker is number 70, Janie Leung.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Leung Weng-si, I'm also known as Janie Leung, and I'm an organizer with the Chinatown Action Group. I'm here to oppose the proposed rezoning at the 105 Kiefer site. This proposed development will not benefit Chinatown. It is clear that BD Living's primary objective is to maximize profits by giving the least possible benefits back to the community. BD stands to make enormous profits from the sale of over 100 condo units, but is only providing 25 units of social housing, which they're not providing, and B.C. Housing has to purchase. This is a drop in the bucket, given the housing crisis being faced by Chinese seniors and low-income people in the neighborhood. The seniors' cultural space will be a private space that has to be rented and is available only to a few select groups. For the community, we will lose not only an important cultural site in Chinatown, but also the potential for much-needed affordable housing and a community space that would truly serve everyone in the neighborhood. We would rather have an empty lot than condos that would lead to increasing rents and displacement pressures in the neighborhood, as Jean talked about, the Woodward's effect. It is important to recognize that the current struggle for the 105 Kiefer site can't be separated from the long history of racism, dispossession, and displacement that occurred on this site. It was first the site of displacement of cursed Coast Tlish communities in the 1800s, and later became a place of safety for Chinese workers from the racism and exclusion they faced in the city. This legacy continues today, as Chinatown continues to be a place of safety and belonging for Chinese seniors, new immigrants, and other low-income people. Many of these residents have worked all their lives, often doing manual labor in the service industry, or caring for children and the elderly, and when they are no longer able to work, they continue to care for their friends and neighbors and buildings in Chinatown. It is their paid and unpaid labor that upholds the foundation of this neighborhood. They are truly the heart and soul of Chinatown. These past several months, Chinatown Action Group has been on the streets and going door-to-door in Chinatown, talking with these residents. We hear their stories struggling with the increasing costs in the neighborhood and social isolation. As the local stores they have relied on get evicted or priced out of the neighborhood, they have to travel farther and farther to meet their basic needs. The new businesses coming in are places of exclusion, where they can't afford it and they're not made to feel welcome in there. We have heard from both Chinese residents and retail stores that they feel like they're intentionally being squeezed out of the neighborhood, by being cut off from their basic needs or being made to feel so unwelcome in their own neighborhood, they will be forced to leave. On Tuesday, Mr. BD talked about the many consultations they have done in the community. I can tell you that many of the residents we spoke with are not even aware of the proposed 105 Kiefer rezoning. Even if they receive notification cards, many of them are not literate and cannot read either Chinese or English. Many are not mobile enough to travel to open houses or to City Hall, and as we have seen with this public hearing, they only get to speak for half the time as everyone else because they don't speak English. There's been no interpretation services of the proceedings in cantinise and manjir for them, so while they can watch people talk about their community and make decisions about them, they're not privy... about them, they're not privy to this information and cannot participate equally. Mayor and council, I ask you, is this how society should treat its seniors? Is this how you would want your grandparents to be treated? This is not only about Chinatown's heritage, this is about social justice for its people and the right to remain and age in place. This is about the right to participate in decisions about your neighborhood. For me, I am here speaking for Chinatown because it is the place that grounds me in my culture and my identity. I am grateful for the popos and the ye-yes, the Chinatown seniors who so patiently pass on their knowledge to me, their stories to me, and are helping me learn my language and my history. When a senior is displaced from Chinatown, the whole community loses. There have been many previous attempts to remove us from Chinatown, from the anti-Asian riots to the proposed freeway expansion. As the city of Vancouver is making efforts towards reconciliation for this historical discrimination against Chinese people, I ask you to ensure this history is not repeated today. I ask you to stop the cycle of displacement of Chinese and other low-income people in Chinatown. Since 2014, Chinatown seniors, youth, and residents, and organizations have come out in opposition to BD's proposed condo tower at this site. Mayor and council, this is an opportunity for you to demonstrate your accountability to us, to show us that we no longer live in a time when our voices are made invisible and the needs of our community are ignored. I ask you to reject the proposed rezoning application, to put people before profits, and ensure the 105 Kiefer site is dedicated to one hundred percent social housing and welfare rates and publicly accessible community space. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leung, no questions. Our next speaker is Violet Chan. Violet Chan, you don't look like Violet Chan.
Donald Mackenzie, Vice President of the Board of Vancouver Multicultural Society, here at her request, my board chair Violet Chan, because she is unwell.
Okay.
It is okay to proceed. I'll begin by reading the memo generated by my board chair, and it's relatively brief, and if I may, I'll, after having read this memo into the record, I'll make a couple of remarks as a person. Dear Mayor and councilors, Vancouver City Hall, I am writing on behalf of the Vancouver Multicultural Society. We would like to express our full support for the above project in Chinatown. We engage all cultural backgrounds in our society. We are very excited about the prospect of having a space that every nonprofit organization can use for their activities and recreation. There used to be lots of spaces available for Chinese nonprofit societies, of which some are provided by the city but are now no longer available. In fact, Vancouver Multicultural Society used to have a place provided by the city since the early nineteen-seventies until lately. As such, we have been desperately looking for a new space for the last four years, but there has been nothing suitable. The proposed new building will be an ideal place for the group to meet and promote cultures from all backgrounds, including the Aboriginal people and refugees, with whom we have been in contact from time to time. Thank you for your kind consideration. Regards, Violet Chan, President, Vancouver Multicultural Society. As I say, my board chair Violet Chan herself would have been here, but is unwell at the present time. So, I want to touch on respect for young people actively involved in these proceedings, and I also want to touch on relationships between Indigenous people and Chinese people. And I'll begin touching on the second matter, relationships between Chinese people and Indigenous people, by telling a story, which I heard acknowledging the presence here of Howard Grant, the Executive Director of First Nations Summit. It's been my privilege since June of nineteen ninety-eight to be a self-described fly-on-the-wall at First Nations Summit. And on the North Shore, Chief Joe Mathias sent her a few years ago, a lunch was hosted by the lady who was the Chinese Consul General, and she had people with her from the consulate business people. But I learned something from her about relationships going back to the late eighteen-hundreds, eighteen-eighties, eighteen-nineties, and some of you may already know about this, but perhaps some of you don't, and perhaps some of you will appreciate learning if you don't already know. A particularly haunting story that she told was how, of course, the Chinese railway workers had the most dangerous work, things like carrying unstable explosives. Sometimes, far too many times, lives would be lost, and the remains of a mistreated Chinese railway worker would be reposing in what we might call a pauper's grave. And she explained that Aboriginal people would show respect to that grave, specifically they would put barbed wire around the, around the grave, so that it might be more likely to be respected as it, as it should be. So I just offer that gift of that story as an example of the profundity of relationships between Indigenous people and Chinese people. And I want to conclude by, at a very personal level, feeling that young, young people with whom I have the privilege of being personally acquainted, who have concerns with regard to this proposed project, are very excellent people, very excellent young people, very purely intentioned, and I guess I'll just conclude by saying that when we respectfully, respectfully acknowledge unceded territory, which I am most happy to do myself, it might behoove us all to remember how Indigenous people are accustomed to conduct themselves in consistently authentically respectful ways, when they get together to speak about important matters, and realizing that we don't always completely agree with each other. Thank you.
Thank you. You have no questions, thanks for coming this evening, and representing your organization. Our next speaker is number seventy-two, Jun Chow.
This is a pretty good height. Good evening, Acting Mayor and councilors, my name is Jun Chow, and I am speaking against the rezoning application at 105 Kiefer. I just started my third consecutive term as a Director of the Hoiping Benevolent Association, which has also submitted a letter reiterating its position of non-support. I was primary, I was primary caregiver to my grandmother, who lived the last fifteen years of her life in a bachelor unit in Chinatown. Our father and grandfather had died, and not wanting to be a burden on the family, she chose to move to Chinatown, where she could be independent, but supported and connected within a community. So I know what it means and looks like to age in place in the neighborhood. The rezoning proposal includes twenty-five seniors' low-income housing units, so that seniors may age in place. But people don't age in place within a three to four hundred square foot box, they do so within a community. So what good are the twenty-five units to seniors when the community they are in and around them becomes steadily erased? Low-income serving shops are much more than businesses, offering language, culture, friendship, and safety and security to seniors and their families when they visit. I speak of Newtown Bakery and Kamgukyun, also known as Daisy Garden, that is being rebuilt after fire, just up the laneway of 105 Kiefer. Council has recognized the importance of such businesses in its research into heritage business designation to offer them protection. Much more qualified speakers have and will continue to question how affordable the twenty-five units will actually be. What, what I can speak to is that the rezoning and scale of development being requested at 105 Kiefer puts at risk many more than twenty-five units of existing, actual, low-income housing nearby. For example, forty-two units of the Sanaa Hotel owned by the Longgong Society across the laneway from 105 Kiefer, thirty-eight units of the Ma Society in their newly renovated Heritage Building, and fourteen units of the Heritage Yusan Society Building, all located on Pender Street. My grandmother lived at Pender in Columbia in senior subsidized housing of the Freemasons at thirty percent of her old-age security, or three seventy-five a month at its highest, not seven hundred. These are housing units that have been made available by Chinese clan associations for generations of low-income Chinese seniors, not by BC Housing, which is paying for the units at 105 Kiefer. Kiefer Street was meant to be a buffer to protect such businesses, housing, and heritage assets of the national historic site of Pender Street from new development and its pressures. Rezoning at 105 Kiefer puts these assets at extreme risk. It also directly undermines the city's investments in the Chinese society legacy program, aimed at stabilizing and rehabilitating Chinatown's twelve heritage society buildings, most of them located on Pender. Supporters of the proposal say that the brownfield at 105 Kiefer is an eyesore, and I agree. However, our consideration is not over whether or not the proposal is better than the current brownfield. It is also not about whether or not there has been improvement through each redesign. We are being asked to consider whether or not the proposal is good enough, period, which it is not, given the cultural significance of the site. In fact, this proposal represents a huge lost opportunity for the Chinatown community. This is especially true, given the city's planning process for the northeast Falls Creek area following the removal of the viaducts. Following an April eighth, two thousand and seventeen workshop with Chinatown stakeholders, city staff acknowledged northeast Falls Creek's adjacent cultural assets in Chinatown, and committed to exploring opportunities to anchor the corner of Kiefer and Columbia as the central Chinatown cultural precinct. The opportunity for Columbia Street at Kiefer to serve as a significant southern gateway into Chinatown was also recognized. I will refer council to staff's full workshop notes. Supporters of the proposal are also quick to recognize the developers' three, maybe four, years of work on this application. But what about the forty-plus years each devoted by Joe Wei, Hain Wei, Shirley Chan, Fred Ma, George Chow, Bing Tom, and others, who have been shaping and stewarding a real vision for Chinatown their entire lives? We are eagles, we are not chickens. Thank you.
That's the questions. Councillor Stevenson?
I've been listening to this now for two nights, rather, and disturbed by this huge split there obviously is within the community, but something you said tonight caught my attention, or just now. What good is it, you said, to have them in a seventy-foot box, when what they need is community, and there's much more to just living in place? But then, the seniors have come, those that, that would be in this box, I guess, and they're very passionate about the fact that they're in supportive this, and saying exactly, this is going to give what you're wanting, this is going to give community, this is going to revitalize Chinatown for them, and these are seniors that have lived there, they say, for twenty to thirty years, which obviously is much longer than you've lived there. So, so what do you say to those seniors who, who are so passionate and are asking us to approve this because, in fact, it will give them the community that you're, that you're asking for?
Ms. Chow, before you answer, you're not under any obligation to answer if you don't feel comfortable.
I think we're, I think the seniors are caught in a very difficult position, they're being, um, there is some seniors that are, we believe, being used. Who don't genuinely understand the repercussions of this project, and are, I mean, this lore of this seniors' cultural space, and it, the, the, you know, I'm going to say it's the myth of a half-market, below-market, discounted rate that they will actually be able to afford. I don't doubt their sincerity in wanting a flourishing, vibrant Chinatown through their arts practice. But yeah, it's, it's pitting groups against each other.
Okay, to say they're being used is kind of a pejorative
Sure.
thing, and, and if we were to ask them, are you being used, do you think they would agree with that statement that they're?
Follow the buses.
Follow the buses, somebody said? Like I said, I think the seniors are, you know, in quite a difficult position, and there's, within Chinatown, given the decades of decline, many are making decisions out of fear, out of fear of continual decline, fear of encroach, further encroachment by the downtown east side, and they feel like they need to make a choice between further encroachment of the downtown east side versus further encroachment of capitalism and downtown, developing in downtown-style luxury.
Okay, that's, I realize this was a difficult question I was asking, so, thanks very much.
Thank you. Those are your questions. Our next speaker is Beverly Ho, number seventy-three.
I'm a first acknowledge that we're on stolen land of the Musqueam, Tsleil-Waututh, and Squamish nations, and we support Indigenous sovereignty and their liberation, as we fight and struggle alongside them, as we have for over a hundred years. And I just want to address some issues that were raised on Tuesday, as well as earlier today. A lot of speakers have said that they want to clean up the streets, which I support, and I feel like these individuals should get their Narcan training, pick up a pair of hongs and a bucket to pick up used needles and trash. The city can also do its part and support more harm-reduction initiatives, and to stop the criminalization of Black and Brown bodies, and we don't at all support the dehumanization of drug users and treating them as scapegoats to our problems. This is not getting to the root of the problem. And secondly, another issue that was raised was that this project would help because our city needs a greater supply of housing in this crisis, and I agree that we need a greater supply of low-income housing at shelter rate, which hasn't been built in years by any levels of government, and this project just barely makes a dent. There's merely twenty-five units, most of them, which are seven hundred dollars, way out of reach for pensioners on OAS. So, yeah, I'm an organizer with Chinatown Concern Group, my name's Beverly Ho, Hoi Ying Yan, and I oppose the 105 Kiefer rezoning proposal. Most of our organizer members, a lot of whom you heard at the beginning of the public hearing on Tuesday, are elderly women with very little education, and many of whom only speak Chinese. Some are illiterate in both English and Chinese, and they've grown accustomed to being silenced, ignored, and told that their voices and opinions don't matter. And as a woman of color myself, I've also gotten used to this kind of treatment, being put second to white women and men in our own community, the Chinese community, even though I have the privilege of being fluent in English and college-educated. So, I've had the honor of being accepted into these elders' lives, and they feel like family to me, and we've grown immensely, I've grown immensely alongside them, these strong, resilient women, and we've been learning together to demand what we deserve, what's been denied of us, and to call out injustices that are forced on us, so namely, the violent gentrification and displacement of vulnerable, low-income immigrant communities, and the exclusion of our voices from, from politics. And so, over the past three years, these so-called community processes by BD have been largely inaccessible to Chinatown residents, and many of them haven't been engaged. So there's severely inadequate interpretation and translation at these open houses, very few residents have received notices for said open houses, and this is just completely unacceptable. And I ask that you respect their language rights and that you really engage the community. And a lot of pro-105 speakers quoted the twenty-five social housing units and the senior center, both of which are still really unaffordable and inaccessible to most seniors in Chinatown, including including the seniors in our group. And this is why Chinatown Concern Group is calling for 100% of the units to be at shelter pension rate rent, for a free, multipurpose, intergenerational community space, and for City Hall to step up, take responsibility, and take care of our elders, who are the living culture, history, and heritage in Chinatown. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sophie Fung, number 74, followed by Melody Ma, 75.
Do I get a restart timer? Thanks.
Start.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sophie, and I'm a member of Chinatown Action Group, and I'm here to oppose the 105 rezoning application on behalf of people like my great-grandmother. My great-grandmother could not enter the country until after my great-grandfather passed away and who had paid an head tax to enter in the 1920s. My great-grandmother lived in Chinatown's social housing well into her 90s. When she was alive, she would walk no more than five blocks to get all of her favorite vegetables, like bak choy. There were many shops to choose from with quality, fresh produce. She would often walk down to Gore towards Georgia Street to visit my grandfather, who worked at one of the small local grocers. Her Cantonese-speaking doctor was on Hastings and Gore, and he continues to practice there today. Close to her doctor's office is the pharmacy, where the pharmacist spoke in Cantonese and Tsim. They explained to her the effects of the medication, and she understood. When she wanted to meet with friends from Chinatown, she would go to Gongzao Lao for dim sum, because that's where my dad worked as a dim sum chef. And when she was up for it, she could hop on a number of buses to visit friends and family outside of Chinatown. She could take the number eight to visit my parents, the number of 20 to see her daughter, or number four to visit my uncle. And on other days, she would visit friends from other social housing unit buildings to play dominoes, and she would walk in the neighborhood in the evenings after dinner. My great-grandmother felt belonging and safety in a community where she saw herself in her neighbors. She had a high quality of life, all because she could live in an affordable social housing in a culturally and language-appropriate community. This is the type of revitalization and character Chinatown needs and thrives on. It's not another building that has facades that invoke some sort of Chineseness. This lot matters to me and the residents who live there currently and in the future, who are just like my great-grandmother, and I see the potential for what it could be, a hub for Chinese seniors and other low-income residents who are able to access all their needs in a small neighborhood. And I see a truly public community space for children, seniors, and youth to gather, and not just a small, closed-off, private recreational space accessible to a few. Vancouver has a rapidly aging population, and a large proportion are monolingual Chinese and low-income. We know that there are more than 25 seniors who desperately need and could benefit from more affordable housing in communities like Chinatown. The 25 units of social housing are just drops in an ocean of unaffordability, and especially because the cheapest units are more than $400, more than those in the area, scaled at 375 welfare rate. The associations and nonprofits have substantial wait lists. The other 100 units of market housing will further accelerate and entrench the neighborhood's gentrification, as shops have closed, and especially ones that serve the community, due to increasing rents and inflated land values. The market housing in this building will jeopardize and threaten other buildings that offer social housing by driving up property taxes. Not only do low-income residents lose if this application goes through, there are no CACs to be gained from the city. The B.C. government is also losing by tripping more than $7 million, and the B.C. public and the government will lose as they subsidize this private development through safer grants. The public, marginalized community members, and the city and province are all going to lose, yet the developer continues to gain its profits. Furthermore, 105 Kiefer opposes and works against the city's own healthy-city strategy, which calls for a home for everyone, feeding ourselves well, being and feeling safe and included. It also acknowledges that our society is not yet equitable, safe, or inclusive for all. With this acknowledgement in your own policy, why is the city doing so little to reverse its inequalities? Mayor and council, I implore you to do more by starting with this development, by working with all levels of government to turn this lot into 100% social housing and to build a truly affordable and accessible cultural community space, which is what all of the seniors, who are even in support of this development, are asking for. The only people standing in their way are the developers, and I think without them we can create a more inclusive community and neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Melody Ma. Melody Ma here? Nathan Edelson. Good evening, Mr. Edelson. Welcome back.
Good evening. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak, and thank you. I'm here to speak in support of BD Living, but I want to explain why. As you know and as you've heard so eloquently, Chinatown is a very important part of the history of our city and our country. As the memorial square reminds us every day, it is the only place where Chinese people who came to build the railroads and mines could own property, who fought in two world wars for Canada before they had the right to vote. When I was a senior planner...excuse me, I noticed there's several senior planners here...for the downtown east side in Chinatown, with Wendy Au's support, I realized that if we were to connect with the community, we had to hire staff of Chinese descent, professionals who could speak the language and understand the culture. We needed one or two such staff, but many more joined our team because they were the most qualified to work throughout the complex issues of the inner city. These included Jessica Chang, who just helped the Ma family complete its renovations, Helen Ma, who I hope you see every day and should someday run this place, and Yan Zheng. They've all contributed much to our work then, and many remain involved now. Several years ago, I spoke in support of the conclusions of the Chinatown height review. I did this not because I agreed with its conclusions, but because after three years it had become a form of Vancouver planning torture, and it was seriously dividing the community, which needs to be as united as possible to help realize the incredible potential of this historic neighborhood. My sense was it would be better to see what several buildings might look like so we could be in a position to end this endless debate. Well, we have seen the result. Go down to Main and Kiefer and spot the large buildings. Is their design really appropriate to Chinatown? Some contain a few units of social housing, but they primarily house others. At the retail level, which is particularly important, they contain large new facilities that are geared to the wider population. Some of these places I haven't been in personally, but I was observing them, Jukes, Virtual Pizza Pie, and other similar shops, as well as the inevitable Starbucks. Key, in addition, as others have mentioned, this has triggered speculation and a significant increase in commercial rents in the area that has driven out the culturally historic...many of the culturally historic uses. The key to an authentic revitalization of Chinatown is that we must pay serious attention, not just to the design of buildings, but to their uses. Of particular importance is to create places that house Chinese seniors, many of whom still speak the language, purchase traditional products, and attract their children and grandchildren. There's also an important need for space for cultural facilities and for the many innovative businesses that find the area attractive. I had the honor of spending more than a year and a half working with Joe Wei, Henry Yu, Jan Walls, and others to explore what this site might yield, containing an interactive cultural facility, space for some of the emerging cultural organizations, and a considerable amount of housing targeted to Chinese seniors. This is the third or fourth time many of us have had to speak out against proposals for BD Living on this site. So much energy has had to be put into both sides. It has become like the night of the BD Living Dead, coming back time after time in a way that feels abusive of the community's resilience and the work of staff. As a council, you have pursued many important initiatives. You have seriously supported reconciliation with our First Nation people, and I think that you're genuine in support of wanting to help Chinatown. In a few months, I believe you'll be asked to consider new ways of respecting the culture of Chinatown and its revitalization, possibly to impose a freeze on rezonings and finding other ways to support this incredible neighborhood. When you make this decision on this site, think of the team council: Art Phillips, May Brown, Fritz Bowers, Walter Hardwick, Marguerite Ford, Mike Harcourt, and others, whose names many of us, at least many of the older of us, still recall. How many members of the previous council can you name? They were swept away on the wrong side of history. People of different political perspectives took on the freeway and stopped it. They created a new planned community for Falls Creek and supported the development of Granville Island. They did not equivocate, as they might have, by approving one link of the freeway because the designs were completed and the funding was available and, and anticipating Nancy Reagan, they just said no, which is what I would ask you to do.
Mr. Edelson, you're over time.
One sentence more. I am in support of BD Living on a culturally appropriate site, perhaps on the Georgia viaduct land. I suspect that if a land swap could be achieved, BD might be proud to contribute to a culturally appropriate building at 105 Kiefer and end its sentence to failed proposal after failed proposal in the long night of the living BD dead.
Council Jiang has some questions for you. Council Jiang.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So Nathan, I know you've got a very long history with the city, and you've been watching what happens throughout the city. And we've heard a lot so far about loss of culture down there, lack of food and all that kind of stuff. And on the other hand, I think of my mother, who is 82 years old, who used to go down Chinatown because that was the only place to get groceries. Now she can walk up to the corner of 22nd and Rupert and go to Chong Li and get everything she needs. So how do we...in a way, it's almost as if we're recre...she put it to me, "Well, I spent my entire life trying to get out of there, and now you're trying to force me back." I mean, that's sort of the...I mean, what's your opinion on that perspective? Because in some ways, we have the multicultural dream in Vancouver. I can go anywhere and get anything of any culture throughout the city, no longer having to go to an ethnic enclave. And so it's almost as if we're going back, and I'm trying to understand that going back.
Well, I'd say two things. One is, phrase the same argument for the Musqueam, for the Slewhatut, for the Squamish. People have pride in...young people and old people have pride in their culture and have been granted certain rights for different historic reasons, but also to...for the three levels of government, and I include the city in this in a serious way, because I know how much many of you have committed to this, to a form of reconciliation. It's not that people have to be forced there. One of the key things that we tried to do in the work in my time, and I actually feel very proud of this, is to engage young people in this. The interest of young people is critical, but the path now is for Chinese seniors. If the Chinese community loses interest in this community, it will die. But we've done market studies, we've done many studies that show that there are a lot of Chinese seniors who would love to live here. There are great facilities here, they're world-class, they're admired by others, and I think we could build those kind of things with the right support. But to take a primary site, it won't kill Chinatown. These young people are much more resilient than probably even...than I am and maybe even you. But they're going to keep coming back, and they're going to remember this decision as a symbolic one. And I would ask you to think about that. You can give them a boost by really going to the BDs and saying, "You've made many contributions to this city. You've been a good development family. Let's find a culturally appropriate site for you and help the community on this site realize its real future." And nobody...I promise, your grandmother will never...or your mother will never be forced back.
Well, following up the point where you're saying, really, the decision is, if we say for or against is a symbolic one. And so when I go to my clan, Jang Wuyang Tong, they often say, "What's our relevance anymore? Do we know any Jangs who need help from us?" And the answer is no. "Everybody's doing well," they say, or "Their kids are doing well. They're all learning the language." In fact, they're all learning Mandarin now instead of Cantonese, because that's the wave of the future. That's all the kids tell me. Like, my kids don't speak any Cantonese, only Mandarin. So I'm trying to understand, then, the realities versus the symbolism. Whereas, the kids would say, "Dad, we're as Chinese as can be. Just look at me. I look in a mirror, and a Chinese guy looks back at me. And I speak the language, and I'm a member of the society, and I do everything that we do, but I just don't happen to live down there." And I...so what's the point? Is it just symbolism, or does it really reinforce the culture that's already very strong and vibrant throughout the city? I'm just trying to understand that.
I understand the point, and I think it's a serious one. But I also think having the place that gives the opportunity to the family associations to recreate their buildings, for the area to transform as it needs to transform, as opposed to going to the highest bidder. That's what we have to look at. And we'll see. It's an experiment. This is a particularly important and meaningful site for all sorts of reasons. I didn't spend a year and a half with Joe Wei. Well, I would have spent a year and a half doing anything with him, but on this particular one, I know his passion, I know the passion of others, because it does play a particular role. It's not that every building in the future has to be for the Chinese, but having a strong base will...it'll take on...
Okay, just on that point, because I'm running out of time. In some ways, the Klan buildings still exist. They're, you know, they need work and all that, but they still exist, whereas in other cities, they don't exist anymore. Is that not enough of a base?
No, I don't think so. I think that the...this site will give an indication. It was similar...that's why I talked about the freeway. Suppose the team council had allowed the first link of the freeway, and then suddenly the next, and the next, and the next were started. This is the beginning of saying, "No, for a couple of years, we're going to give these young people and the seniors that they work with a real chance to create something for the future that's innovative and that isn't under the market pressures that are so profound in that area now."
Thank you.
Next, Chair of Council Armour with some questions.
Hi, Mr. Edelson. Thanks for coming again. I was just reading the notes from when you came in 2011 to speak to the original Chinatown rezoning policy, which my memory was you were in favor of.
I mentioned that. The Chinatown height review rezoning, I supported it, and I said I support it. I looked up my notes. I can read them to you if you want.
I have them right in front of me. I have a copy of them at least.
The support was provisional because this had gone on for three years, and it was dividing the community, you know, terribly. And so my sense on that was, they'd come to the compromise, and they could come at that time. Let's see what's there. Take a good look at what's there now. And if you think that should be the future of Chinatown, then support this proposal, because that's what's going to be coming.
Okay. So the second question, I mean, if it were a decision between 120, 18 feet and a land swap, it seems very appealing to go for the land swap. The challenge for us is that it's not. There is no land swap on the table. And I appreciate you've offered up land, but as you probably...sorry, offered up a theoretical piece of land by the viaducts, not personally offered us land.
Your theoretical piece of land.
Right. But that land, of course, is very valuable to the Black community, who has some key historical issues that they would like to reconcile there. So if it is a choice between what is on the table, which is the outright zoning and the rezoning, can you speak to that?
Yeah. I would put...I would suggest to the BD family, the BD Living is good, and it should be in the right place, and they should do the right thing. They'll decide what they're going to do, they have rights. But this is one that the young people of Chinatown and others are not going to forget the decision one way or the other. If they're supportive, they could play a tremendous role, as they have in some issues in the past, in helping a genuine revitalization of Chinatown, or they can be the symbol for other things that are moving forward. And that's...I would hope that they make the right decision on that and find another site and win the support and the respect of the Chinatown community. And in terms of the viaducts, as I understand it, yes, the Black community was expropriated from that land, but so were a lot of Chinese owners. There's a need to...there's a need for reconciliation with both communities.
I understand that, and exactly precisely why I wouldn't necessarily put it on a list of land to be swapped for condo towers. That was more the point I was making. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Those are your questions. Thanks for coming this evening. Next, we have number 77, Simon Fellows. Next, 78, Maria Wallston.
I'm not Maria Wallston, but she asked to switch with me. I'm at the end at 2:37. So if I may speak instead of Maria, and we can switch... So if I may speak instead of Maria and we can switch if that's all right with council and.
You're Phoenix Winter?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to start by acknowledging the territory that we're working on and walking on and the people that have looked after this land for thousands of years. And I want to acknowledge the Squamish, the Musqueam, and the Slay With Tooth. My name is Phoenix Winter. I am a former resident of the downtown east side. I still call the downtown east side my community. It's where I spend most of my time. I have been walking up Kiefer Street for about 10 years now and walking home and I have to say I've never felt threatened there. And I really miss the night market and the vibrancy of Kiefer Street. And with the new developments that have taken place there, it's really changed the experience for the low-income community. I don't see the people there in the same ways before. They're people that I don't recognize, that aren't part of the community. And I also have to say I value Sun Yat-Sen Garden, which I understand with the new development is under threat, that the, it was conveniently said that the new development would not influence the Sun Yat-Sen Garden, but a certain time of year was picked when it would not influence the garden, but the rest of the time it probably would. And it's a very big cultural asset, the Sun Yat-Sen Garden. I'm against the rezoning and I want to support the Chinatown Concern Group's request for 100% housing at pension welfare rates and a cultural space for the Chinese community that's intergenerational. And I see the new developments coming in that are supposed to represent the Chinese community and they don't look Chinese at all. They don't look, they look like a box that's been transplanted from somewhere else and they're soulless. There's not a sense of community about them, there's not a sense of walking down the street, knowing your neighbors. And my other concern about the, the rezoning is that the units that have been set aside for affordable housing are only for 10 years and that's not really a long time for people or a long time for the housing. It seems like people, developers can promise 10 years and then get out of it. And what we're looking for is 100% pension welfare rates. And it really makes a difference when you can get different generations living within one space and working and helping each other out and all being in the same boat of 100% pension welfare rates. It makes a different feel for a building. And a lot of the buildings are being sold that have housed Chinese seniors. And with the housing going, it's important that 100% pension welfare rates are applied. The other thing that I think is important is the youth and it's really great to see the youth being so involved in this. And I understand that there's concerns about Chinese seniors, but we speak to a lot of the Chinese seniors in the downtown east side, not everybody of course, but it's, I've seen the work that the Chinatown Concern Group has had in talking to the Chinese seniors, hosting mahjong for them, interacting with them, and it's really made a difference in terms of their lives and they contribute so much to what's going on with the Chinatown Concern Group. So I just really want to emphasize that the Chinatown Concern Group does interact with a lot of Chinese seniors in the downtown east side that haven't been a part of the voice at City Hall. And I've seen them bring voice to those seniors and I think that's really important. And I really wanted to ask council not to accept the rezoning. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you. All right. And next speaker is number 79, Franz De Reek. Is Franz De Reek here? Speaker 79, not here. Speaker 80 is Larry Chung.
I would like to switch with Speaker 82.
Okay. Howard Grant, Councilor Howard Grant, Musqueam First Nation. Thank you very much for being here. We should have had you up earlier as an elected representative, my apologies.
Thank you, your worship and members of city council. And thank you to Larry for allowing me. That I, and no apologies necessary, your worship, that I registered quite late and unfortunately, I, when I found out that you were going to go till Monday, that I would be in Toronto. So I just wanted to say thank you to Larry for allowing me to replace him at this time. First of all, I want to indicate that my name is Kaye Polanuch. It was my great, great, great grandfather that met Captain Vancouver so that this city could become a thriving metropolis that it is today. And equally as important, my name is Hong Mun Hing, a name that was given to me and provided to me through my father and my grandfather and my family from the province of Chongsan. And I've heard other speakers come forward and talk about who they are and where they come from. But to actually touch that physically, emotionally, spiritually, is yet to be answered or heard. And that's the most important aspect of the conversation that we're having tonight and these past few days. What is this building? What is the fight? What is the opposition? Because I grew up in Chinatown as a young boy. I played in the alleyways, I threw grapes with Yvonne Koo, Jim Koo's daughter. I played with other members of that family, Bucky, late Bucky Koo. And as I grew up to a young adult, I played basketball at Gibbs Boys Club and enjoyed my life there. Those are memories and moments in time that I can hold forever. And as a young adult, I walked the streets of Pender and walked into those nightclubs like Marco Polo, Bamboo Terrace. And at 2 o'clock in the morning, enjoyed food at the old Sewu restaurant. You know, we reminisce and we romanticize, but in actuality, were we touched by it? Or do we just have someone else's words to recollect those moments? And today, I'm saddened, I'm deeply saddened to hear a conversation of confrontation. I asked the opposition, have they ever sat down with the BD group and said, can we find options for solutions to our concerns? But they chose not to. They chose to say, we have drawn a line in the sand and nothing will change that. But our fathers and our grandfathers and our grandmothers, as they came to this Gold Mountain, they saw that there was no line in the, in the sand to be drawn. They fought the opposition, the racism, the discrimination, and they overcame that. Someone talked about the two world wars, about your grandparents fighting, fighting to be part of this country and this city. And now we muddy that, we sully that by saying, this is what their memory is. That was never the case. And when I look at this building, I've seen compromise after compromise after compromise. And I think there would have been even further compromise if there was a sit-down to say, what is it that you're really asking for? Because I've had the opportunity to deal with the BD group on a more personal level in regards to a construction site within my nation. And we had a number of changes of things that they've never seen before. And their willingness to develop relationships was beyond the almighty dollar. As a matter of fact, they lost a lot of money because they accommodated those kinds of concerns in order to have that relationship. And today I stand before you, your worship and members of council, to say that I love Chinatown. I have great memories of it. It's a living ghost for me. I will remember the opium dens that were there, which I saw on a regular basis. I remember the gaming facilities in the back rack rooms. But most of all, I remembered the vibrancy of the weekends on a Sunday afternoon where all of the Chinese people would congregate there. And that's what I see this building becoming. Because on the ground level, you have this recreational facility where you, the young people, will come and visit your grandparents, hopefully, and re-embrace the downtown Chinatown community. Because where were we in the last 25 years? When I walked Chinatown in the last 25 years, I didn't see that many Chinese youth. They were all in the suburbs. But now I hear that cry. But is it the right one? So your worship and members of city council, I think this is a catalyst that will reinvigorate people coming back into Chinatown and it will build a future done properly and having people like the BD group helping us to redevelop that. Because relationships and conversation are the most important aspects of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you have questions? From Councilor Jang.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for coming. Your opening lines touched a note with me. You talk about people, you worked with the Koo family, you mentioned places I went to, gambling dens. One place you did miss out was Ming's, that's where I used to hang out upstairs. And--
They kicked me out of there.
No. I got kicked out of Sewu, it's okay. But the notion, I'm trying to put this into words. So we have a discussion and we heard a little bit from other speakers about symbolism, we heard about buildings, we heard about people, we heard about culture, we heard about this. But what, twigged something I want to ask you to explore a little bit more, is what makes Chinatown? We've heard a lot of discussion about buildings, but yet you brought up very clearly, it's about relationships and knowing people. And are they incompatible?
No, they're very compatible in the sense that when you look at the people and it's the people that make community. And you spoke earlier and asked the question about going shopping elsewhere in, in the more suburbs of Vancouver. You know, yes, you can go TNT Market in Richmond and other, other places. But what makes it so special to be in Chinatown? And I can say, as an example, when I buy a box of fruit, I know that there are no rotten oranges in that box. Because the extra mile that those store owners would take to take out those that were, that were becoming moldy and whatever. And the extra effort that went in to ensure that a lot of the products of China that people got to enjoy were still there. But now you start to see those, Wamui, my favorite. Where can I buy it now? You know? Few and far between. So things like that are missing. You know? And, and, and it's the vibrancy of when I went into the restaurants of family. And sad to say, even going into the gaming room, that it wasn't just about winning, it was about engaging in conversation with your male counterparts.
So what, if I understand you correctly, it's, it's about a place to meet and it's about the people. That's important because we never used to meet in a fancy place or whatever. It was always a restaurant or the grocery store. Like, my mom meets her buddies up at Chong Lee Market now. Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, that is all your questions. Thank you very much. Councilor Grant, and we are on to speaker number 81, Sid Tan. He's here, followed by Nathan Crompton, 82.
Welcome. Thank you. I acknowledge that we hold this meeting on unceded lands of the Musqueam, Squamish, and the Sewu tooth. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening, Mr. Mayor and councillors. A luxury market development is an inappropriate use of the land at 105 Kiefer and 544 Columbia Street. For this reason, I oppose the development. My name is Sid Chow Tan, an immigrant and proud naturalized Canadian. My ancestors and family have nearly 170 years of history in North America, Turtle Island, Gold Mountain. I am a 40-year resident of Hamhui Fau, Saltwater City, Vancouver. Our family has overcome the geography, the climate, and the racism that greeted us on arrival. I am grateful to and thankful to the First Nations for allowing our family to settle on their land. We are in a struggle for the soul of Chinatown. It began with the Lo Wah Ki, the early overseas adventurers and pioneers who drove a railway through the rocky and coast mountains and picked gold from its guts. Targets of 62 years of racist Canadian laws from 1885 to 1947, Chinatown's founders persevered. Given alien status, they gained strength and fought the legislation. In 1947, their sacrifices claimed the rights and privileges of citizenship. The soul of Chinatown is its people. I wish to thank Fred Ma, a tireless champion for Saltwater City. He helped lead the successful campaign for national historic site designation and continues to encourage young people to fight for UNESCO World Heritage Recognition. Fred has taught generations that our Chinatown has significance and a place in the world. Gentrification in Chinatown, which is in the downtown east side, has played havoc with the needs, assets, and tenure of the current low-income and working-class residents. To help correct this, the city of Vancouver can provide leadership to purchase from or negotiate a trade for the property with the current owners. There are precedents for outright purchases and land swaps. Jenny Kwan, member of parliament for Vancouver East, proposed this earlier in this process. This is a view to do what is best for the community. A seniors center, cultural and intergenerational space, along with social and truly affordable housing, would be an appropriate use of this site. Fred Kwak, chairman of the board of the directors of the Chinese Cultural Center states, quote, "The height and massing of the proposed project does not fall in line with the cultural and architectural context of the neighborhood," unquote. It makes clear the site is, quote, "a culturally significant area," unquote, and that the proposed project, quote, "lacks the fine-grained architectural elements to make the project truly a building of Chinatown." We are a species of ideas, words, and action. At one time, the residents of Chinatown were considered heathens without souls, who deserved no political rights, respect, or humanity. The hard-working John and Mary Chinamen and their cute, well-behaved children became the white man's burden. Our forebears endured. Things can and have changed for the better. We all stand before history. As we confront our past today, we must also look to the future. Power of politics and chasing the quick buck now root and sully Saltwater City and dishonors the legacy of the Lo Wah Ki. Thankfully, the roots of Chinatown have grown deep. Thankfully, the roots of Chinatown have grown deep and become resilient. The struggle of today's residents honors the legacy of founders who heroically battled and overcame generations of legislated racism. The history of Chinatown residents is to struggle and prevail. If this continues, the heart of Chinatown will again be strong and its soul full. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councillor Meggs, have you got questions? We have questions from councillor Meggs.
Just one question. Do you find it weird, as I do, that we would consider building a senior center so close to the Chinese Cultural Center? Could we not mobilize that space tomorrow if we wanted to for the purposes you propose?
I don't know about weirdness, but...
Right there, the city owns it. So the proposition is the city would go out and do a land swap, or purchase land, or do various things, when in fact, the city land, on-city land there is a Chinese Cultural Center, probably could hit it with a baseball from the site we're talking about. And I just wonder if you and others who've raised this issue have thought about that existing facility for some of these purposes.
Well, I'll tell you what I have thought about, councillor Meggs. I've thought about the fact that over $700 million in today's, not today's, in 2006 dollars, was paid in the head tax. That's a lot of money. And if you put that in, is it, if the Harper government, or the Clark government, or perhaps even this government, considered a repayment? I mean, I see this in a lot of ways as a repayment, because this money has been paid in, and I believe the community was short-changed by the amount of head taxes taken out during the building of Chinatown. Why can't, why can't people come together? Why can't this government, the feds, and the provincial government, and you councillors, come together and work out a deal to buy this property? Because as I said, my objection is simply that it's an inappropriate use of the land. Luxury condos are not needed there.
No, that was not my question, but you're free not to answer it. So I appreciate the feedback you've given me, but I just wonder if we couldn't mobilize the center right away. It's just a thought, but thanks very much.
Councillor Reimer, you have questions?
Yeah, I think a fairly straightforward one. You read a quote out from Fred Kwak in your speech. Do you have a reference for that? I was just trying to find the letter that he sent us.
I have the letter.
And he sent it to us, so it's in the package somewhere.
I have a copy of the letter, I should say.
I would love to have a copy of the letter, if it's possible to get it.
We're on Facebook, I can post it to you.
Okay, good, and I'll send it to the clerk, and she can make sure everybody's got it. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much for being here and speaking. Thanks for coming. Our next speaker, Nathan Crompton is our next speaker. Nathan Crompton, from Van Duh, not here. Okay, we'll go to Mark Lee, speaker number 83, followed by Stephanie Fung. Welcome.
All right, just give me a second. Don't touch. Hi, my name is Mark Lee. 我叫陈德聪. 我的名叫做陈德聪. I'm a community interpreter and translator who's been volunteering with Youth for Chinese Seniors in Chinatown since August of 2015. I'm here to support Chinatown seniors, low-income residents, and many other hard-working members of our community who have come here to be heard. And I oppose this rezoning application. Originally, I planned to translate this entire speech into Chinese, but as many of us are discovering more and more, this council values convenience over fairness in this process, giving those who require an interpreter effectively only half of their right to be heard. This lack of language access is also what allows people with different motivations to take advantage of seniors and get them to support something that they may not want, and results in the uncomfortable truth, like the woman who sat beside me on Tuesday and told me that she's actually opposed to this development, but felt she could do nothing about it, and when I pressed her, she simply said, "You understand why, and I don't." So with that said, my grandfather's grandfather, my great-great-grandfather, first set foot in this city in 1896. My family has been tied to Chinatown ever since, despite effort to push us and others out, that apparently continues to this day. My mother grew up in a house owned by her grandfather in Strathcona at 639 Dunlevy Avenue, until the '60s, when the land was bulldozed. My uncle worked in a barbecue meat store owned in part by my grandfather on Pender, called Guanghing, and that is now Space Lab. All of my mother's siblings and cousins went to Chinese school in Chinatown. I came to Chinatown with my grandmother as a child. We used to eat dim sum at Garden Villa before hanging out at the Chin Wing Chun Society Building. And I'm telling you this because I want you to understand what it feels like to be intimately connected to a community for four generations, and be told that more of the exact same thing that we have seen over the years is somehow going to revitalize the neighborhood. Somehow, an influx of unaffordable housing, and unaffordable retailers, and unaffordable restaurants is going to save Chinatown. And I'm not buying it. Corporate entities with vested interests weighing in on a 25 so-called social housing units versus Chinese seniors, low-income residents, and community groups who actually stand to gain from social housing units, those who are saying that, A, $700 is not affordable, and B, even if it were 25 units, in comparison to what has been and what is being lost in Chinatown if this project goes through. Between them, I would hope that you would choose to believe the community when we say that we can't afford this. And we can talk about supply, because it's just a waiting game, but when you say that we can't have affordability until we have the supply, what I'm hearing is that you really mean we need to prioritize people who have money before low-income residents can have the leftover scraps. So I'm just wondering if we should have to sit by while a developer essentially holds this lot ransom? Supposedly, it's either, you know, give them 12 stories, or they could just build nine with no community benefits, or even leave the lot empty. But you can't put that on us for being opposed to this development, which does not fit our community. The lack of affordable housing for low-income residents continues to be your responsibility. You can't keep pushing that responsibility off on others by saying that this is private property. That didn't stop the city from expropriating the land my mother grew up on in Strathcona. And besides, you're not being asked to expropriate the land like the city did to the families in the '60s. You're being asked to reject this application on the basis that it does not meet the needs of the community in a way that would merit the extra floors. You're being asked to reject this application on the basis that it will tower over and desecrate the Chinatown Memorial Plaza. And to say that this is a sensitive site is a grave understatement. You're being asked to show understanding, creativity, and above all, leadership. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much for coming. Stephanie Fung is our next speaker. Speaker number 84, Stephanie Fung, followed by Vincent Xu. Good evening.
Good evening, council. My name is Stephanie Fung, and I'm speaking as a member of the Chinatown Action Group. I'm speaking today against the revised proposal. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge that we are on the stolen, occupied, unceded, and traditional lands of the Musqueam, Assaiwatu, and Squamish First Nations. We must remember that the 105 Kiefer site and the place we know today as Chinatown occupies territory that has histories of indigenous communities before the Chinese arrived. As a guest on these territories, I think today about what it means to be accountable to our communities. I think about histories of resistance against displacement and gentrification that have led to where we are now. Over the past few years, I've been hanging out with Chinese seniors from ages 70 to 100. They have lived in social housing in Chinatown for 25 to 30 years, and I've seen the dramatic changes happening in their neighborhood. Through the time I spent with them, I have witnessed firsthand situations in which seniors feel helpless because they are unable to access support services due to language barriers. Furthermore, the doctors that have been catering to the Chinese community have moved away from the neighborhood, making it especially difficult for seniors to access the culturally appropriate services that they need. Furthermore, incidents, I've witnessed incidents where requests for translation and interpretation for seniors, especially during open houses and community consultations, have been denied. Seniors have been telling me stories about racism and discrimination on the streets. They've been telling me rises in rents, their neighbors moving away. They are feeling socially isolated because more and more longtime businesses that sold affordable goods and catered to Chinese communities have closed or moved to other neighborhoods. They also tell me about their life experiences, often traumatic, of surviving wars and famine, of their struggles of migrating to Canada, their difficulties of accessing culturally appropriate services, and eventually finding belonging and community in Chinatown. Chinatown is important to seniors because it is affordable, centrally located, easy to access by bus and rail transit, and it is a place where they can speak in their native languages. But over the years, it has changed. Listening to what seniors have to say, it is clear to me that the proposed development at 105 Kiefer does not address the needs and concerns of the neighborhood, and the site can be developed in much better ways. I urge council to reject BD's proposal for 105 Kiefer. Why? We don't need any more market housing. What we need is more social housing. This project with the majority of market housing will only contribute to the gentrification crisis in Chinatown, in an area that is already vulnerable to displacement of low-income people and working-class serving businesses. 110 market units will drive up rents in the neighborhood, which in turn will make it unaffordable for low-income residents to stay and live in the area. In spite of the inclusion of social housing, 25 units will actually be seeing rising unaffordability as more working-class people are priced out of their homes. So the Chinatown Action Group asks that all three levels of government must acquire the site at 105 Kiefer and build 100% low-income housing. 25 senior social housings is not enough. As other members have stated before me, we are developing a document that highlights their findings on what have been the most pressing concerns affecting residents who live in Chinatown, and proposing ways in which the government can address these concerns. Let's remember that the 105 Kiefer struggle is not just about preserving heritage and commemorating the past. After all, the Chinatown community is diverse and has a history of displacement of marginalized people, not just Chinese. It's about recognizing and fighting for those who have the most at stake, those who are most affected by the housing crisis. I think about low-income working-class residents, seniors, people who can't speak English, people living in SROs in this neighborhood, those whose lives are threatened the most by relentless development and gentrification if this condo is built. The issue of the lack of affordable housing raised by others before me is not limited to Chinatown. It's happening across the entire city. I urge council to listen to the community that strongly opposes this proposal. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for being here to speak. And next speaker, 85, Vincent Xu, followed by Justin Fung.
Good evening, council and mayor. Thanks for your student attention and listening to everyone's opinions. I'm here as an architect, self-employed architect, born and raised in Vancouver. I grew up in East Van, first Commercial Drive and then Renfri Heights. Probably during my childhood growing up here and my high school years, I probably spent at least two days out of the week in Chinatown. So I'm here to speak in opposition to this application for rezoning for an extra three I do believe something should go up on this site. It's a very iconic site. It's the gateway to Chinatown. So having stuck that with its adjacency to the gardens, which I used to spend almost every weekend in painting, and actually, some of my paintings were exhibited at the Vancouver Art Gallery. And also, the gardens had, you know, more significance to me because my family has roots with Dr. Sun Yat-sen, because they were prominent figures in the revolution back in 1911. And our families continue to have close ties, and I've had the pleasure of having dinner with Dr. Sun Yat-sen's granddaughter, Lily Sun. She stayed at my parents' place before, and when she visited Vancouver, and so we remained close. Now, to be fair, I looked over the policy report, and I did not see any evidence supporting or justifying the extra three floors, because when an applicant is requesting an extra three floors, I think there should be sufficient social good and contribution to the community and the city to justify their extra profits. So I looked at the indicative design, and kind of the write-up and the design intent and everything, looked at the renderings, and it made me think there was a lot of rhetoric, a lot of proponents have been using words such as "reinvigorate." My mind's gone blank right now. Reinvigorate. So, and it kind of like makes me think back to architecture school, when Peter Cardew was at my school, he's a prominent architect in the city. And there was a student proposing to, wait, I gotta look at my notes here, hold on. Okay, so there was a student proposing to revitalize a blighted neighborhood. I can't remember where the site was. And so Peter Cardew asked a question at the end of the presentation, and so he asked, "If you're proposing to revitalize this neighborhood, what was vital about it in the first place?" So in looking at all the renderings and the drawings, I did not see any understanding of what was vital about Chinatown. And so, and I think, you know, what they're proposing, the social housing units, that kind of temporary 10-year lease on the space for the seniors, it's a bit of a washout, I think. I've been listening to some of the presentations, and it seems like, I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, BD Group is building these social housing units and selling it to BC Housing at cost. I don't see, there are no CACs involved, there are no CAC demands, so it seems kind of like a washout to me. Yeah, so they're building an extra floor with some senior housing units, and BC Housing's buying it. And, okay, great, and then, so how much your rent's gonna be? And so I've heard arguments that, you know, nothing was stated in the policy report, but it seems that the lowest rent for the units is said at 700, I think. And so the arguments were made, that's really not affordable, that's not welfare rate. So I'm not quite sure these senior housing units are gonna, you know, help any of the existing residents of the neighborhood. Furthermore, I just want to state that this, the outright application, if this, this is inevitably gonna go ahead as a luxury condo unit, whether there's gonna be senior housing units or not, but I have to say that this is another generic tower going up in Vancouver, it's a vertically gated community, and, you know, it just, you can't ignore it, because like even all the way in the UK, the Guardian newspaper wrote an article about how Vancouver is the loneliest city in the world. And I think, council, you have to think hard, well, you know, well, the zoning's already allowing this tower at nine stories. So if you're gonna grant another three stories, well, how are they going to reinvigorate this neighborhood? And, you know, as an architect, I've looked at the plans and everything, and I can tell you, nothing about this project is going to reinvigorate this neighborhood. It's going to kill it, it's gonna gentrify it. So all this rhetoric about reinvigorating and revitalizing, I just don't buy it, it's not convincing. So if I have more time, I can go into what I think should go into the site.
You're over your time, if you could wrap up in a sentence.
Okay, yeah, and that's just, I think... Yeah, and that's just—I think maybe the applicant should go back to the drawing board and try to come up with more social contributions, and maybe revise the design to be more iconic, more modern. I think right now it's just trying to emulate what's existing in Chinatown, and that can really, on another front, that will destroy the heritage of Chinatown. Because once you do that, you can't tell what's old and what's quaint, right? You can't differentiate it.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Questions from Councilor Carr.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I am interested in knowing what you would put into the building.
Sure. Well, first of all, I'd probably try to improve the—I know it's just an indicative design right now, so it's not really designed. So I would try to kind of maybe advise the applicant to maybe look at—just looking at precedents around the world where there's more social interactions, social activating spaces, more serendipity, people—diverse peoples getting together and meeting, because that's what Chinatown's about. It's about, you know, random conversations in Dimson House. You know, I used to eat dim sum with my grandfather probably three or four times a week in Chinatown, and the conversations would go across tables. People would be yelling at each other, talking about politics and debating. When you get rich people in the neighborhood, that's not gonna happen, you know? And all the Chinese merchants saying that they need more people in the neighborhood to support their businesses, well, I don't think these new residents are gonna be coming down, buying barbecue duck every day, you know? They're not that type of people, right? So now, looking at the main floor, which is really important, I had this idea that, you know, you really need to divers the program there to bring more people to the site. So in fact, I would probably see something controversial. Maybe give the applicant more floors, but in giving the applicant more floors—and that's a taller building—that might anger a few people. But those extra few floors is an opportunity to bring in those socially activating spaces. Maybe it's a museum dedicated to Dr. Sonnet Sen. I was in Hong Kong last year. I went to the Dr. Sonnet Sen Museum there. I was just amazed at, you know, the effort and the political maneuvering and, you know, the struggle for that revolution. I mean, I spent hours there just reading everything. I fell asleep, so—because I was there for four hours, and I was just so tired. And there is so much history with that garden and with, you know, a lot of the people, early immigrants from China to Vancouver, from Jeong San, including my dad and my grandmother. And, you know, Dr. Sonnet Sen is a national figure that all Chinese people respect, whether you're Taiwanese, from Hong Kong, mainland China. So really, I think, you know, first off, diversify the program. Have a look at the edge condition of the building. Make it more inviting, because right now it's kind of introvert. It's, like I said, it's a vertically gated community. So just—I know there's interior passages to invite people in, but I think spaces like that tend to be dead. I mean, just look at Tinseltown Mall down the street from it. It's half-empty, you know? People go there for the cafe, right, and to watch movies, but otherwise, there's nothing there. It's dead. So if you look at the perimeter of the site and you create inviting thresholds, so it draws people to the site, but then you have a threshold to, you know, separate the private from the public. It's that threshold space that is a social activator. Without it, you're not gonna get any activity. You're just gonna get a straight wall going down the lot line. No one's gonna walk in. And I have to say, if you look around the city at all the empty CRUs in the city—I don't want to bring it up, but, I mean, no one can do business here anymore. It's too expensive. CRUs are failing kind of spaces in the city. So we need to diversify it. We need spaces to support the CRUs. So, I mean, just building a CRU and letting people put a business there, what's gonna attract the people there? So if you, for example, add a museum, then you get tourists going there. The tourists are gonna be hungry because they've been spending four hours learning about Dr. Sonnet Sen. So they're gonna be getting some food after. And, yeah. Another thing I forgot to mention, there was a book written by J.G. Ballard called High Rise, and there was a movie made about last year, and it was about a tower in England where they stacked rich people on top of poor people. Well, so it was like, the top of the tower is for upper class, middle class in the middle, lower class on the bottom, and this is what's happening with this tower. And I think it's very demeaning to the seniors living on the third floor.
Okay. That's your time. Thank you very much for being here to speak.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Justin Fung, followed by Speaker eighty-seven Angela Kruger.
My name is Feng Hui. I was raised in Wenggawa. My mom and dad moved here five years ago. Today, I want to oppose the 105 Kiefer project. I'm sorry. I'm going to turn the page. I hope you can translate my name. My name is Justin Fung. I acknowledge that today I'm speaking on the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh First Nations. I'm part of a citizens group called Housing Action for Local Taxpayers. I'm speaking both for myself and on behalf of HALT. We oppose 105 Kiefer's development application. My parents came here in the late '60s from Hong Kong and have lived here ever since. It was through my weekly trips into Chinatown as a child that allowed me to stay connected to my heritage, seeing the live rock cod at the Fishmongers, the smells from the Chinese herbalists, and watching the little old ladies inspecting the Sayang Choi while convincing my dad to let me buy a pack of haw flakes at the grocery stores. This year, I brought my daughter to the Chinese New Year Parade. As she sat on my shoulders, watching Mimi Ho's kids dance in the streets, I was reminded how important the Chinatown community and culture are to the many generations of Chinese diaspora that call Vancouver home. Chinatown is a unique, special community that connects us to our culture, roots, and identity. It's not just a historical tourist area, but a vital neighborhood and a vital part of who we are. I'm not concerned—I'm concerned that Chinatown's culture, my culture, is being eroded, if not erased. As a father, I want my daughter to have the same opportunity and connections to Chinatown that I've had, and for her children and grandchildren to have the same. But it's even more important to local residents living in the area now, including First Nations, Chinese youth, and seniors who contribute to the culture and community. Many of its residents are poor or low-income. This is their home. We see Vancouver's Chinatown being chipped away by neglect, avarice, and greed. Chinatown needs housing security for its full-time residents and a strong community to thrive. I'm concerned that the city of Vancouver is not listening to the community and not doing enough within its powers to help improve Chinatown for its residents in Vancouver. Has the city approached the federal government and Minister de Clos for funding? Minister of Parliament Jenny Kwan spoke earlier and said that this hasn't happened. Why? We're concerned the city is listening more to developers and moneyed interests than putting citizens of Chinatown first. Many people have made fortunes on real estate in Vancouver while many others struggle to find and secure affordable housing and survive. 105 Kiefer doesn't appear to benefit the direct community and the community at large much. Twenty-five units are arguably affordable, as Jean Swanson noted, and is a pittance when there's still a desperate need. The rest will be luxury condos for open market investors and speculators. How does that benefit and serve the local community? I'd also like to call into question, and I'd like council to question, where did the buses that brought in almost one hundred Chinese seniors here, and how did they find their way here on Tuesday? How did they pay for those red t-shirts in support of 105 Kiefer and for those buttons? How come those seniors— How come those seniors weren't even clear on what was going on and clapping and cheering for anti-105 Kiefer speeches despite wearing red t-shirts that were in support of 105 Kiefer Street? Council needs to have these facts before making its decision. We want to see better transparency on how and when CAC waivers were decided, how the cost of social housing and how the benefits were calculated. Was the land independently appraised before and after reviewing this proposal? If so, are these reports available? If not, why not? Has the city negotiated the best possible deal for Chinatown? It seems to me that the developer will profit nicely without making much of a direct contribution to Chinatown and its local resident community. It seems to me the government can do more for Chinatown than it's leading on. Mayor Robertson and council, you stand upon a precipice of a decision that will shape the heart of this city. Your votes will determine the legacy that you will leave behind. Will you act with courage and integrity for Chinatown's future and dare to dream? Or will you facilitate the erosion and trivialization of Chinatown's contributions, paving the way for more rows of glass condos adorned with culturally appropriated dragons devoid of the rich culture and history that came before? I'm here today speaking for the first time in my life in front of council because I owe a debt of gratitude to the Chinese Canadians who came here before me and created this Chinatown community. I'm thankful to be a Canadian citizen because they fought for the rights of Chinese Canadians to live here and to be treated fairly and as equals. For the right to vote, voting, which is a privilege that many Canadians and Chinese Canadians in this city take very seriously. In this year of reconciliation, Honorable Mayor and council need to support Chinatown, its residents, and the community. Vote for their best interests and reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Carr. Questions? Councilor Carr?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for coming. I really appreciate that. If you were negotiating—your question was, "Did the city negotiate the best deal?" Well, what deal would you have negotiated?
I certainly would have pushed a lot harder, given that, again, we've added three additional stories, but we only got one story of social housing. For the record, I am in support of the proposal to do, you know, to put in one-hundred percent social housing at 105 Kiefer.
Okay. Okay. And that would probably require dealing with the other levels of government, as you stated, I think, that MP Jenny Kwan noted, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. And the height? How do you feel about the height?
I feel the building is too tall. The Chinese people—we—two of our largest cultural celebrations are the Mid-Autumn Festival and the Spring Festival. In both cases, the view site to the moon is a very important part of that. I'm a little bit concerned about the height of that, especially looking up from Dr. Sonnet Sen Gardens, whether or not that would be impeded.
That's an interesting question. I'll ask staff that question. Thank you.
Councilor Megs, questions?
Yeah, I don't understand what's sinister about seniors wearing t-shirts or coming in a bus. I mean, if they know each other and they can club together and take a bus, is there a—
I'm sorry, sir, but I don't—they weren't even aware why they were here.
No, no. You're telling me that that's your finding, but you—what I know is the case is there was a bus, and I saw the t-shirts, but I don't—I'm not sure why you're suggesting the council should read anything sinister into either of those things. Maybe you could spell it out.
Well, again, so we had asked them why they thought they were here, and many of them weren't very clear on that.
The bus, the bus and the t-shirts.
Yes. Some of them—I—so again, this is purely hearsay, so I certainly don't want to get into it, but my understanding is that they were offered a meal, they were offered certain things to come, and I don't know—the circumstances—
Just hearsay.
It was certainly very, very well organized.
Hearsay. There's a lot of good organization tonight, Mr. Fung. Lots of good organization tonight.
I understand, but sure, many of us have organized ourselves and come out.
Good for you and good for them. That's all—I just wanted to clear that up. Thanks.
Okay, that's all your questions. Thank you for being here. And we're on to our next speaker, which is Angela Kruger, speaker number eighty-seven.
Good evening. Is that working? Can you hear me?
Yep. Go for it.
I'd like to acknowledge that we're on the unceded territories of the Musqueam, Tsleil-Waututh, and Squamish peoples, and let's do our best together to honor them. My name is Angela Kruger, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Japanese-Canadian Young Leaders of Vancouver, which is a grassroots group of young Japanese-Canadian activists, researchers, and arts and culture professionals working together to strengthen and empower our community. I'm speaking against the proposal for rezoning at 105 Kiefer. I have to speak to you today because I am in pain. And I'm in pain because for the past few years, and especially for the past eighty-six or so speakers, I feel that I've been sitting virtually powerless in a foldable blue plastic chair, witnessing the start of an economic landslide that threatens to erase Chinatown much in the same way that the Japanese-Canadian Powell Street neighborhood was erased in years prior. I'm here to tell you that this, bearing witness to the disappearance of Chinatown, causes me pain. And although I certainly don't expect you to assess a proposal for rezoning in our city based on the extent to which I'm in pain, I'm telling you about my pain because I think others are in pain too, and I feel strongly that pain cannot be absent from this conversation about our city's thoroughly contentious site at 105 Kiefer. I was here until 11:00 PM on Tuesday. Several speakers alluded to—or explicitly named what has been talked about as the soul of Chinatown. I'm telling you, mayor and council, the reason we are here in these chambers discussing the soul of Chinatown is because people are in pain, and the reason people are in pain is because they are experiencing a traumatic loss of home, neighborhood, and community that hearkens back to still felt, still haunting, still happening experiences of racism and discrimination, sometimes, in the case of Japanese-Canadians at least, confusingly in the name of safety and protection, however wrongly so. I know that things change. I know that people, neighborhoods, and communities lose things. I know that people, neighborhoods, and communities can even lose themselves, but I know that because I have lost myself and my own neighborhood, and I have to work tirelessly—it feels like impossible work just to keep the remaining sense of community that we do have. I'm a twenty-six-year-old mixed Japanese-Canadian woman. I'm not naive to the realities of the world. I know that discussions about historical wrongs, impacts of racism, haunting pasts, and pain are not items on the agenda for a public hearing about 105 Kiefer, but they are the very things that I think are at the heart of the site and at the heart of this hearing. If this feels as grueling for you as it does for me, as it does for my friends in Chinatown, as it does, I'm sure, in its own way, for Mr. BD and his team, I am just here to remind you, that's because 105 Kiefer has a heart, and it is hurting. I stand in solidarity with the Chinatown Concern Group, Chinatown Action Group, Youth Collaborative for Chinatown, and with so many seniors who have expressed to you their concerns about access to affordable housing, affordable food, and their overall sense of belonging in their own neighborhood. I understand that not every person who is connected to or living in Chinatown feels the same way about 105 Kiefer, nor do I expect them to. I've seen a lot of Chinese seniors here in red t-shirts that read, "Support 105 Kiefer." I'm concerned that some of you—or all of you—will see their t-shirts or hear their words as decontextualized, simple, easy support, rather than the complicated expression of a desperate need for affordable social housing that it is. I see a tragedy when I see these people wearing these t-shirts because they remind me of all the Japanese-Canadians who tried to save and protect their communities by working with the government, only to watch with the rest of their families and community as their belongings and homes were sold and neighborhoods destroyed. I would like to say that the site at 105 Kiefer, which many people have reminded us is currently a parking lot, was not always a parking lot. It used to boast two opera houses. Moreover, it is a parking lot which is situated at a formidably powerful location in our city and in the Chinatown neighborhood for its proximity to important sites that others have mentioned, like the Chinese Classical Garden and monument commemorating Chinese-Canadian soldiers. I would like also to remind you that this is not a proposal to develop the site at 105 Kiefer to twenty-five units of social housing. This is a proposal for a giant condo development that happens to include twenty-five units of social housing, only eight of which can foreseeably actually be affordable, which is debatable at $700, and seventeen of which the applicant has told us they aim to make affordable. While I understand that cost-benefit analyses are useful and necessary at times like these, I urge you to not fall victim to the rhetoric that asks, "So are you saying you don't want social housing?" This is what not anyone is saying, so let's not ask ourselves that. Let's ask ourselves why we are in pain. I am in pain because I have already lost my neighborhood, and I don't want my friends to lose theirs. Let's honor this land. Let's do better. Let's do one-hundred percent social housing somehow.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Our next speaker is number eighty-eight Kel Gerlings. Kel Gerlings is followed by eighty-nine Chris Forrest Wong. Welcome.
Hello, mayor and councilors. My name is Kel—
My name is Kel Gerlings, and I'm here today as a coordinator for the Vancouver Tenants Union and as the new organizer for the Raise the Rates campaign. I'm here also as a settler. I've been living on unceded Coast Salish territories for the past six years now, and this is something that I would like to acknowledge before anything else happens in this conversation, that we are living, working, gentrifying, displacing on the traditional ancestral and unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Salawitut peoples, and this can't be forgotten. As you're sitting in your suits and you're sitting in your chairs and you're deciding what's supposed to happen in this city, that you're not supposed to be here. The biggest learning that I carry forward and that I bring here today is in listening. It's in listening to the stories and the experiences and the realities and wisdom of the elders in our community. And every single thing I hear and all of the stories that I witness say the same thing. You can't trust big money. You can't trust developers. You can't trust this city to have any idea of what is good for the people who live here. Connect the dots. As a housing justice advocate who does outreach work in the downtown east side, Chinatown and its fight against gentrification are at the forefront of my mind every single day, in the forefront of all of our minds. It is absolutely impossible to spend any time in Chinatown without noticing the obvious and horrifying amounts of gentrification, fancy coffee shops, the monolingual bankers, the white-owned barber shops, and vintage thrift stores, all these new and innovative spaces that are displacing low-income residents and seniors of Chinatown. I stand here today in solidarity with the communities that I work with and learn from. I stand here today in solidarity with the Chinatown Action Group, the Chinatown Concern Group, against the proposed rezoning and this idea of redevelopment and revitalization. Do you mean displacement? Do you mean massive influx of money and gentrifying of this space? This proposal simply does not provide nearly enough benefit to the community without the massive risk, that's not even a risk, the massive guarantee of displacement to come. This is not an initiative led by the community who knows their needs most. 25 units of social housing? Are you kidding me? This is an insult. It is an absolute insult, when the fact is homelessness has risen by 30%. When the fact is, Mayor, I promised to get rid of homelessness by 2015. It's 2017 right now, and you have a crisis in this city. 25 units of so-called affordable housing? With the most affordable being only eight? Seniors deserve more than this. Low-income residents deserve more than this. Chinatown and the downtown east side deserve more than this. We do not need more developers coming in and offering pittancees, the smallest of crumbs to this community, who has endured so much. We do not need more lies coded in the language of revitalizing, when we know that all that is being revitalizing are the pockets of big developers who are linked to rent evictions, who are linked to increased homelessness in the downtown east side. Don't tell me this isn't happening. I see it. We see it. We all see it, and you are to be held accountable for this. You are to be held accountable for these decisions that are happening. Your redevelopment is rent evictions. Your redevelopment is displacement. Your redevelopment is further colonization of these lands. We see through this. It is not enough, no more condos. This is enough of your luxury developments. This is enough of your luxury units. This is enough. No more. Chinatown needs more than eight units. The downtown east side needs more than 25. We know what the numbers are. We know the rates. $610 a month, $375 for shelter rates, when most people are struggling to get by on $540 for an SRO room. Are you kidding me? Where are your bylaws now? Where are your bylaws now reinforcing the decisions of landlords, of slum lords, who are pushing people out of their homes and onto the streets? Where are your protections? Where are they?
So you are over your five minutes. If you could wrap up in a sentence, please.
Do better. Do better. People, not profits.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Chris Forrest Wong. Speaker number 89, followed by Speaker 90, Yulanda Louis. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Chris Forrest Wong.
If you could just move a little closer to the mic, that'd be great.
I'm a member of the Wong's Benevolent Association, an ancient Chinese clan. We've been around about 100 years, and I'm here to express my disapproval of the zoning application here on 105 Kiefer. As many of you know, these associations have been here since the beginning of Vancouver. They are the soul of Chinatown. They created brotherhoods that flourished, built families, allowed me to live a great life here in Canada, be a Canadian citizen, educated. So what is our interest in 105 Kiefer? We have two historic buildings in the National Historic Site on Pender Street, and they sit directly behind the 105 Kiefer building. If you look on your little map here, directly to the left, my left, and as well in front of the Cultural Centre, we have another one there. So we have strong opinions on this, this development. In our buildings, we do the line dancing, which is a big part of Chinese culture and makes Chinatown what it is today, as well as we have the Monkong School, which is still in operation today. People are learning Cantonese, and we have a lineup out the door for the next semester, as well as an ancient banquet hall that is obviously very important to us. My role is, as a youth coming in, is to bring these organizations into modern times. We know that they more or less served their purpose in the early 1800s and, or, sorry, early 1900s with discrimination and having no females here and not being able to vote. Like I said, I live a great life here now, so we understand that Chinatown has done a lot, and it's here to do more, and I'm representing one of these clans to do that. So what are my points here? You're building, or you're proposing a 115-foot building in front of our national monument to recognize the railway workers, the war veterans, and frankly, we just see that as way too high. I mean, look at this thing. It looks like it's double the size of Pender Street, which is the National Historic Area. So it just feels like a little bit of a disgrace, disrespect for the diversity that we as Canadians pride ourselves in. The other, my second point is the business deal. To me, okay, we've been here six times, which is great, and obviously sounds like there's a lot of disagreements about what should be here, and now we're coming back with 25 social housing units, paid for by B.C. Housing and the taxpayer, for three levels of glass. And last time I checked, the Kiefer building beside has a four or $5 million apartment for sale. So the type of people that you're bringing into our neighborhood doesn't necessarily fit the area, as well as the $700 rent, you know. I know for a fact that most of the Chinese seniors pay a lot less than that. So there's a disrespect to the, to the community about the size and, and, you know, what it is. The deal and $700 in social housing, I mean, that building is really in the heart of our city, and it should be more than luxury condos, or a majority of it should be for public space, whether that's social housing. Like I said, we have a school, a gymnasium, things that the community actually uses. And, and yeah, we'll sit in our, in our school, the first federally recognized Chinese school, and look out over Newtown to the back of this glass tower and sit in the shadows, and I'm all for saving Chinatown. I understand that, you know, gentrification is a crazy thing, and a lot needs to be done, but I think that this is just frankly the wrong approach. It needs to be shortened. It needs to become more of a diverse block to fit in with the Cultural Centre, the gardens, and the monument. I know there's been recommendations like land swaps, which I have heard are off the table. Frankly, put them back on the table. You guys have the power to do that. That's a no cash deal. Maybe you buy it, but either way, the building needs to come down. It needs to fit contextually within the area so that we can rebuild Chinatown the way it needs to be. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. You have questions from Councilor Carr?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks so much for coming. Appreciate your presence here. So you did, near the end, start to address the question I have, which is the impact of this building that you worry about on the two buildings that are behind it. You mentioned views, and it has to come down. My question is, it could be under current zoning, 90 feet. Would that still impact your buildings in terms of shadowing, et cetera?
Yeah. I mean, I look at it right now, maybe not in the heat of summer when the sun's, you know, nice and high, but definitely in the winter. And again, they can build outright to 90 feet, you say, with no social housing. I mean, they're going to have to put a development application in for that, and I think we'll be back here again and again and again. So, you know, I'm hoping that you guys can step up. But to answer your question, yes, it will affect us.
Yes, okay. So you would, would you be advocating for a building that was even shorter than the 90 feet that's allowed under current zoning?
I wouldn't say advocating. Like I said, I think the greatest thing for us is a land swap, and then the city use their resources and Planning Department to really think about how not just the 105 Kiefer block, the Cultural Centre, the garden, everything needs to fit together to be the heart of Chinatown. But I'm a bit of a realist too, to say that we might be back here again. 90 feet max. You know, everything else in that area, our building's 50, 60 feet. That's the National Historic Site levels. You know, there was a question or statement said that, you know, what is the ruling around zonings around National Historic Sites? Well, I don't know, but they should be respectful, and 60 feet seems respectful to me.
I did ask that question, and there, right now, there are no regulations around that, although there is, there are some people pursuing a UNESCO heritage site, and there are some more stringent rules around adjacent development to those. Yeah. In terms of the use, you sort of indicated that there should be some different kind of use. Do you have ideas around that?
Yeah, I have a lot of ideas. You know, I definitely think some social housing to keep our people in the community is important. You know, rip that glass off and put a nice balcony up there that the community can use, you know, and get them in that area. I mean, Chinatown is a tourism, or has been flourishing through tourism, so, you know, to get people outside and active in the community, go to the garden, you know, go to the rooftop, go to the memorial, get some food, you know, these type of things. So public places.
Public here, okay.
I know it's a privately owned building, that's tough, but, you know, the city can make it work.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions from Councilor Reimer?
A quick question, I think, around seniors programming that you have through your association. Are there programs for seniors?
Yes.
And is this reasonably common in the different benevolent associations?
Yes. Like I said, let's say pre-1940, I'm not sure the date, we weren't allowed to have women here, so we lived in these buildings. They housed the railway workers that built the Canada Line and Confederation and all that. You know, we think we made huge sacrifices for our country, so they've been repurposed over time, right? And now, yeah, the big part of that is seniors, and I recognize that, you know, as a big part of my job is to find new purposes for these buildings, and right now, seniors is definitely a big part of the clan association's jobs.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much. That's all your questions. Thanks for being here. Next speaker is Yulanda Louis.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Yulanda Louis, Louis Jiwa, and I want to acknowledge that I'm speaking on the unceded and occupied lands of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Salawitut nations. I want to thank these indigenous nations and all of you for the opportunity to speak in front of all of you tonight about an issue that is dear to my heart. I am a Chinese seniors outreach worker in Chinatown at Youth for Chinese Seniors of a Tera Development Society, and I am standing here today to ask you to reject this rezoning proposal for 105 Kiefer. As part of my job, I organize meetings and social spaces in Chinatown and the downtown east side for and with Chinese seniors and youth. I also connect seniors to social and medical services, providing services myself when services accessible and affordable to low-income, non-English-speaking Chinese seniors does not exist. I am coming today after consultations with the very seniors this project will impact. Every day, I hear from seniors that they feel abandoned by the government and by institutions which are supposed to be caring for them. They reach out to me to ask for my support in their basic needs, like finding housing, getting affordable meals, going to medical appointments, reading their mail, things for many of us which, who are more privileged, may seem like simple tasks, but are very difficult for the low-income, non-English-speaking Chinese seniors I work with. Most of Vancouver is geared towards those of us who can speak English and who have enough money to meet our everyday needs, but that is not the case for the Chinese seniors I work with. Chinatown is the only place where they have, where they can maybe afford to live, eat, and be in community. And I say maybe because even Chinatown seems to be disappearing. Seniors need housing in Chinatown. The lack of affordable and accessible housing is a big issue for Chinese seniors and is directly related to the barriers they face to accessing the services and resources they need to survive. First, 25 units of social housing is not enough, especially when only 30% of these units, or only eight units, are guaranteed, as stated in the report, and are to be, quote, "occupied by households with incomes below housing income limits." There is no guarantee this will be affordable to the low-income seniors relying on GIS and OAS pension to survive. You have heard many people, including some of the seniors I work with, tell you this already. Secondly, the 106 market rental units will only speed up gentrification in Chinatown. People have talked about 105 Kiefer bringing in new residents and new businesses to revitalize the neighborhood. However, as with the, as with the other luxury buildings that have been built recently in Chinatown, we see more businesses that are expensive and cater to a more wealthy and English-speaking population. We are not seeing businesses that actually serve Chinese seniors and help them meet their daily needs. We are seeing more and more zones of exclusion, as defined by Carnegie Community Action Projects' report on retail gentrification. More and more businesses are coming in that cater to the wealthy residents who can afford to live in expensive condos. These are not the Chinese seniors who are living in Chinatown. They lose their services, their grocery stores, their gathering places, which are disappearing because of rising costs, because of these expensive businesses and condos are driving up the property rates and pushing Chinese seniors out. The more expensive condos, like this proposed building, is built, the harder it will be for our low-income Chinese seniors to survive in Chinatown. These are people who have struggled for their whole lives. These are people who I, as a Chinese-Canadian young person, owe my ability to exist as a Chinese-Canadian. These are people who have lived and survived through terrifying discrimination, racism, and violence long before you and I were born. I fight alongside of them every day, and hope you take, I hope, I hope you take what I am saying to heart. What the Chinatown community needs is 100% social housing at pension rates with a public and accessible senior community space. I am asking for what the MP Jenny Kwan asked on Tuesday, and what many seniors and others of the Chinatown community have been asking for, which is for all three levels of government to buy the site and build a much-needed home and community space for our low-income elders in Chinatown. I am asking you to show the Chinese seniors of Chinatown that they matter more than money, that their voice is valued and respected within these walls, and you believe that they deserve to have their basic needs met. Don't let Chinatown just become a cultural token of the Don't let Chinatown just become a cultural token of the past for developers and wealthy people. Reject the rezoning of 105 Kiefer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming to speak. Speaker number 91 is Ivan Drury. Here comes Ivan Drury, followed by 92 John Cassidy.
Good evening. I wasn't planning to see you guys again in my life. I want to acknowledge that I'm on the unceded territory of the Squamish, Musqueam, Tsleil-Waututh Nations. This is the unceded land of these nations. And unceded means political domination, not a relationship of consent or mutuality, and that this City Hall is part of that relations of domination. The plans passed here have always worked to accumulate the lands of these indigenous nations and have never worked to redistribute them, despite fancy words to the contrary sometimes. The fact is colonial property forms are both private and public, but public property forms have a sort of interesting characteristic that they can be redistributive. They can return some aspects of the wealth stolen from indigenous people back to them because they operate, operate outside of market value. I'm here to oppose this rezoning proposal and to stand with the Chinatown Concern Group and the Chinatown Action Group and their demands for 100% social housing at this site and for you to reject the BD ultimatum. The BD ultimatum is born not of tonight, not of this particular rezoning proposal. The BD ultimatum, which is accept these 25 units of social housing or will build at nine stories at not, the nondiscretionary heights, and you'll get nothing. That ultimatum is born by decisions made previously by this very council. In 2011, this council passed the Historic Area Height Review, which they called a historic compromise between interests in Chinatown. Those interests were the heritage interests of some on, on Pender Street and the property interests of some developer, some of the developer classes and investors. That historic compromise resulted in the raising of building heights to nondiscretionary heights of nine stories along Main Street with some special sites at 12 stories or 15 stories that you could then ask for some benefits for depending on those rezoning dimensions. But this compromise completely removed the low-income community. It removed them discursively in order to later remove them physically. The focus of the discourse around the Historic Area Height Review in 2011 was two. One was this alarming specter of empty storefronts that people spoke about as blight and as death for the urban space in ways that were reminiscent to me of the slum clearance freeway fight stuff from the 60s and 70s. And the other real focus was the displacement of the low-income community, which was portrayed as dangerous and diseased and as an element of that blight of empty storefronts. This discourse was also racist because it obliterated low-income Chinese residents. It pretended that they didn't fit in to either the property interests of the historic folks or the developer folks, nor the dangerous drug user low-income people who were in these empty storefronts. The very first people removed by the Historic Area Height Review were low-income Chinese people who were residents of the area. What the Historic Area Height Review represents is a market lever for development. The empty storefronts, they were filled or being filled by gentrifying businesses like Propaganda and Virtuous Pie and Dalena, places that low-income people cannot possibly enter, that they feel as violent impositions in their daily lives and that serve them in no way whatsoever. Chinese Concern Group seniors have told me that those filled storefronts are worse for their lives than empty storefronts. Market levers can only produce one kind of change. They can only produce change that aligns with a profit motive. And yet here today, despite the evidence that market levers are actually displacing and gentrifying Chinatown and filling storefronts, empty storefronts with more toxic gentrifying restaurants, the proposal before us is to continue with, to continue to use market levers. People keep referring to the freeway fight in Chinatown as a thing that should be guided to, used to guide us for this moment now, whether it's against or for this proposal. My family was expropriated in the 1960s for Stamps Place. The house that we grew up in, the Russian community there, was, was expropriated by City Hall and they built Stamps. I'm glad they did. My fam, they got paid for it and they bought another house in Burnaby. And Stamps Place is one of the largest social housing projects in the city, in the province. I think historical justice is not enough for ending, ending expropriation shouldn't be the lesson from that. It's that we need to end the rule of private property, which is colonial because it destroys indigenous economies. It's racist because it preys on negatively racialized, devalued, devalued urban spaces. It's time for us to say no. I hope you say no to the BD ultimatum altogether and bring back expropriations with BD as the first target. Let's seize the holdings of these corporate powers and go beyond acknowledgement of historical wrongs and begin to redistribute the wealth that has been stolen from us. A milder form of that will be to say no to this disastrous project and do everything you can, move heaven and earth, as another politician recently said, to build 100% social housing at this site. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. Okay, we've got speaker 92 John Cassidy next. John Cassidy, followed by 93 Kay Higgins.
I would like to thank council for this opportunity to speak, number one. I would like to thank you for taking the time to stay this late hour of the night. Speaking, asking for a deferment first, I would like to check something with CMHC, just in terms of who I am. I was the acting treasurer for Canada Mortgage and Housing. I was on their debt committee. I was on their senior policy committee. I'm a former bank, investment banker, worked on Bay Street raising quantum funds for in real estate, but I have a lot of interest in Chinatown. So I have some questions tomorrow for some senior officials at CMHC around this issue that I want to be able to speak on tomorrow. So if I can get a deferment, that'd be great. Yes or no?
You wanted to be back on the speakers list?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
So I want to bring a balanced perspective to this discussion.
All we can do is, you, you can come back on the end of the speakers list. That's the, the switch out here. You're certainly welcome to do that if you want more time.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it might not be tomorrow. It may be, it may be on Monday if we don't get to the end of the list tomorrow.
Right, right. Okay, well, I just, I wanted to just do it right now then.
Okay.
Probably the best thing.
Up to you.
Looking at this project and looking at the dynamics of this project, you know, there's a lot of, I think we had this discussion, one of the members here on council I've had this discussion with and as, you know, it's, it's a complicated issue, no doubt. You're at a, you're at a watershed moment, I think, in Vancouver and especially with this, this neighborhood because of the velocity of development coming down Main Street and the choking point coming through Gastown. So it's at kind of a, it's at, it's at an angulated point where, you know, you have to make a decision on this project, but the bigger decision is, what do you do with this neighborhood? And the economics of this neighborhood have been, there's been a lot of mistakes. It's been, you know, let's, 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 let's be upfront and there'd be a lot of things that have driven this to what it is today. I remember working back when I was a university, British Columbia student, did an undergrad in economics, I did planning and ended up going and doing masters. But I worked at Oppenheimer Park when I was my second year of university and I worked with Jim Green. And we made some fundamental changes in that neighborhood to stabilize the neighborhood. One could argue that Jim Green used the Israeli settlement policy by dotting the neighborhood with social projects, social housing, but it did stabilize the neighborhood. The drug problem unfortunately erased a lot of those gains and it then flowed into Chinatown. So my, looking at this project, I don't think you're ready to go for 12 stories on this project. I think it just doesn't make any sense. And the social housing aspect, as I see it, is economically unviable. It's, it's counterintuitive. And I've funded probably raising money, being on policy committees at CMHC in Ottawa, probably close to six or $7 billion worth of fundraise. And as a former investment banker who advised the city of Vancouver, B C MFA, province of B C, I can go through every municipality and region in this country. This is something, looking at it from a pure economic standpoint, from a planning perspective, it doesn't make a lot of sense. It makes a lot of sense from the developer's perspective, but you guys are in a very, very, very hard position making this decision. And I think you have to take a hard look at the future of Vancouver, the future of this neighborhood, because the velocity of development that is going through, and I will, I will speak that the mayor, I think, addressed it very well at the SFU house, the speaking session you had with the former mayor Harcourt. I think you nailed the points extremely accurately when you talked about, you know, Canada Revenue Agency not getting behind some of the things in the city. But more importantly, what we need to do is take a, take a breath, step back, look at what's going on and try to understand. And this Kiefer Street, to me, is fundamental in the survival of Chinatown because it represents a second-tier nature of Chinatown. And as I see it right now, Kiefer Street is becoming Yale Town dressed up as Chinatown. It's, it's not Chinatown. And I think you've got an enormous opportunity in Chinatown to create probably the best tourist attraction the city has to offer. And it's been a wasted opportunity for far, far, far too long. And this could be a opportunity to look and say, we can do this in other cities as well. If you look at the Bronx, Brooklyn, Chinatown and San Francisco, every city is under the same pressure that you are under. But you have to look at this project and as a citizen of Vancouver, having been born and raised here, having been involved in social housing, I say this project should not go ahead. This rezoning should not go ahead. I think it's just not the project at that time. I think it could be much better. I think the senior citizen aspect is a selling point that's gone too far down the road on this. I think it's tokenism. I think that the 25 units is just marginal at best. And I think the numbers around this project in terms of the cost, it's, it's very hard to determine the actual numbers, the hard, soft costs and the hard costs of this project. So if I'm looking at what, you know, in finance, what we do is we look at an internal rate of return on this project, it's very hard to determine. My understanding is the developer bought this for 16 million plus and the net, net costs with the construction, I don't know. So I have to look at these numbers, but I think that you can do a lot better. And I think there's a great opportunity here to look around this room. I mean, I remember taking Paul Tennant's Vancouver Politics class back, way back, coming to these council meetings as a kid when, you know, Jack Vorrich was mayor and you go through the, he was, he's like, he had nothing to argue with there, that people pass on, but you want to pass on a legacy here. You have a responsibility. You're elected officials. I have a responsibility to bring some sort of balanced perspective based on my experience to this discussion tonight. And that was my intention. I'm not coming in with like, you know, some, some ideas that I think that are just over the top. I think that we have to look at it and say, what can we do better here? And I think the only way you can do better is to kick it back to planning and say, what, what can we do here to make this work for the neighborhood, for the economic revitalization of Chinatown, and more importantly, for the future of the city of Vancouver? We're all from here, we're either born here, moved here, or whatever, but we have an opportunity to create something better, you know? And this is not better. This is basically, it weighs heavily in the developer's favor. So on that note, I leave it.
Okay, thank you very much. You have questions from councillor Carr?
Sure.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for coming. I appreciate, and I appreciate you taking the time to stay tonight. We, you know, if you get more questions of yours answered tomorrow and this hearing is still going on, you are free to email us information that way.
What I hope to have done was spoken to some CMHC representatives in Ottawa and some other people that I know that could add value to this project because you're kind of hand-tied in terms of, you know, what, you're very limited in terms of your options here. And I think there's more opportunity from a broader, you know, economic macro perspective on what you can do in Chinatown. And I think it's, it's been, the can has been kicked down the road too long. It's like an X and Y axis, if you study basic economics. The X and Y axis here are crossing and it's not a, it's not a tangent that you should basically be looking at in a positive favor because the velocity of development is exceeding. So historically, what we used to have is what, you would raise interest rates. And I used to sit with the Bank of Canada in Ottawa and 1999, we went through this whole discussion. We went through this discussion in 2001. And unfortunately, you don't have that option where the Federal Reserve is raising interest rates, which then slows down real estate development. What has been, what has happened in the city of Vancouver is that we've removed risk from real estate and specifically real estate development. And when you move risk, we have this massive discussion that we're encountering now. We just haven't had the time to fully develop the process.
So you've said a couple of things that I think I'd like to pursue a little bit more. You said that we should be adding more value to the project. Does that mean more housing? More housing at a deeper subsidy level? Maybe spell, spell out what you mean by more value?
Well, if you look at the, I mean, you know, I don't want to, I mean, see, you know, I'll look, I'll use an example of my mother. I came back to Vancouver to look out for my mother specifically. And one day your parents are 85, next day they're 92 and then they're dead. The next day, you're 20 years later, or whatever the period of time is, you're back in that situation as well. So the seniors issue, I think, is something that is, it's kind of a false placebo in my opinion because the future of Chinatown is the economic revitalization. And those seniors will, in a short-term structure, will be part of that revitalization, but the long-term revitalization is Chinatown. And this project specifically is that, I think that the seniors can be expanded. I think that the space that they're being given, probably you could, probably get that space in Tinseltown. Tinseltown's like an enormous amount of space and as councillor Meggs brought up, I mean, that point you just brought up about, you know, moving the seniors to whatever. I mean, there's a lot of opportunity around that. But I think that there's more opportunity to, to put in more seniors housing in that project in the short term, but in the long term, what have you got? So it's a chicken and egg situation. It's very, very difficult to deal with. But from my perspective, I disagree with the project. I, I don't think it has the full consent of what you would look at in that type of project. It's basically a trade-off. When you get into trade-off type situations, you're kicking the can down the road. So you have to address the full implementation of what you want to do.
So when you, when you, when you talk about adding value and stimulating economic revitalization within Chinatown, then would you change the entire land use at that site? Or what, what would you put in that site?
I think the opportunity in that site is just enormous. I mean, people, the unfortunate part of this is that Chinatown did not act in acquiring that land. The city did not act in acquiring that land. I was actually working for a developer at the time here in Vancouver. We were, we actually looked at that site and we looked at the site next door, among many others. But fortunately as, and I'll use the classic example, the quote from the developer that was that, "Life's too short," meaning that when he did developments in Gastown and he was one of the first developers to come into Yale Town. And it's just, there was too much, too much complication around building and doing projects at that time. Now it's smoothed out. But what's going on is with these low interest rates, it's, it's, the equilibrium is, is broken, the historical equilibrium we've had. So in talking about the site that you're, you're bringing up that point, that site offers enormous opportunity, but you don't own it, okay? BD group owns that site. Look, we have to be realistic here. You can either land swap, okay? Or BD goes to bed tonight and he wakes up a different person tomorrow and he decides to do a deal.
Okay.
But he's putting up one hell of a fight.
That's, that's fantastic. Can I ask one last question? Because I'm, I'm just about out of time. Given your experience with CMHC, do you think that what B C housing has offered, which is 7.3 million for 25 units, 292,000 a unit, does that sound fair to you?
It's really hard to look at the costs. I mean, if you go back, you walk it back, I mean, if I was marketing that unit back, say, four or five years ago, I would have been selling those units at, say, $350 a square foot. I'll use an example that Concord sold that, the Aquarius, which was designed by Arthur Erickson and a colleague, Peter Webb was the architect on that, managing it. They sold that at $1,000 a square foot and that was unknown in Vancouver. And now you're probably looking at a cost in the Aquarius, if you were to do that again, they would probably come in at $2,000 a square foot. So the cost right now is extremely difficult to, A, justify and B, for B C housing, they've got to show you better numbers. They've got to show you the real numbers. To say they're in negotiations is putting a lot of opaqueness onto the discussion. So they have to show you the hard numbers, okay? Above the line, below the line, what the construction costs are and to really get an understanding of, in finance, what's called internal rate of return and net present value. Because I'm going to guesstimate that, given what you're, what the developer's going for at 12 stories, he's probably coming in in a, an IRR of somewhere around 35 or 40%. And the average IRR in a project is usually around, you, you basically gain for 22 and you try to, it'll fall back to some 15 or 16. This is in a historical development cycle. This is This is not a historical development cycle that we're going through by any means. So I think the city really has to step back and really ask the developer the proper questions, but the answer to my, my long and short of it is this project should not be rezoned. I mean, I think that you've got too much opportunity and the old saying, when in doubt, bow out. I mean, the opportunity here to do that site correctly, I think, is, it won't come back. You know, when buildings go in, when the corner of Kiefer and, Kiefer and Pender, those two corner buildings went in, you're not going to be able to redo those mistakes. Here you have an opportunity to take a good, hard look, step back, you know, meet in the middle ground. If you can swap out that land, fantastic. But the developer's bringing a full game on here. They've got a full communications team going in here and they're not messing around. What you have here on the opposition side is basically a hodgepodge of all various organizations. They're speaking from integrity, from the heart. The developer is doing what developers do. And I've worked around that process, I've financed through that process, and they're doing a very good job. But I think what the council has to do...
Okay, that's councillor Carr's time. Councillor Divinidova, you have questions, please?
You don't have to answer this question, but you mentioned that you looked into the site for a developer you were working for. Would you be here speaking against the project if that developer had, I mean, you mentioned you work in the...
That's a great question.
The marketing business, I have to ask because you did open the door by saying that.
Well, you, as a developer or, you know, you always look for those areas that are, you know, marginalized or underrepresented in terms of cost and you try to basically increase the value of that property. That's what a developer does. That's what even CMHC wouldn't. When CMHC goes into a neighborhood or any kind of, or HUD, whomever it is, or in Europe, be it Berlin, London, whomever, when you put the Olympics into an area, you go in and you stabilize that neighborhood and then you economically revitalize that neighborhood. What it does, it puts up the value and the cost. And that's the, that's the real conundrum you guys are faced with here in the city. You're behind the eight ball, you're behind the timing of this. So in answer to your question, I would have gone in and I talked to the developer who was leading on it and I wanted to put in a Chinese project that, I firmly believe that Chinatown has enormous historical perspective, but you don't want to live in the past, you want to respect the past, but we have to look at the future of Chinatown here. So in answering your question, I think that that building offers an opportunity to put the Chinese position for the future on the map, not living in the past. Everyone, I've heard all about the associations and people coming here and that's fantastic, but, you know, we're all going to be dead at some point, you know? And we have to look at what the founders of this city and what the planners, the Rankins and all these people that have sat in these seats, you know, what are we doing best for the city? So I think in this, in terms of this project, we have to step back. By giving those 12 stories with the social housing attached, the social housing, in my opinion, it's tokenism because it doesn't affect much. And if I'm, you know, I think one speaker spoke very well on the fact...
So I'm just wondering, then, does the, was the development that you would propose, because you're talking about your vision for this site, did that include 100% social housing?
It could have. I could have gone out like...
Okay, I was just wondering if it could have, that's fine. I just wanted to know if you had a vision.
I did look at, there was a number of properties in Chinatown that we looked at for 100% social housing. And I'll say this right now, that if done right, money is not an issue in Chinatown. If you economically revitalize it and stabilize it, money is not an issue. So the real issue is that, A, you're faced with a time consideration. Your biggest problem is you've got a time consideration because you've got this giant development ball coming down Main Street, a giant development ball coming through Gastown, the lease rates have gone through the roof, so everybody in Gastown wants to move to Chinatown. So what do you have left? What are you going to have left if you've just got these Chinese buildings with tokenism? And I think we've got a real opportunity to maintain something and create a fantastic environment for the future. And I look for it for kids, generations upon generations, they can say, at this council meeting, this is a big council meeting. I think we're all kind of surprised that the, what it ended up as. I think I spoke to a number of you actually at various things and you were kind of surprised what was coming up on Tuesday. And then now we're into Thursday and then Friday and probably...
I just want to clarify something. I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, I haven't spoken to this gentleman about this public hearing, but the public hearing process is very strict. And if any councillor has spoken...
No councillor, they've been, they've been on the tee. They have been on the tee. They've been extremely professional.
But you said they'd spoken about how surprised they were about this, so I just wanted to...
I think we all are. I think that this issue, you're going to see this issue again down the road because I think the people of Vancouver and the citizens in general, if I, I'll give you an example. If I raise interest rates 1%, 100 basis points over the next two, three months, I could collapse the global housing market. And if you look at 2008, how we got here right now is through massive quantitative easing that was not just required, it was saved everything. And then we had what's called forward guidance in economic... What is forward guidance? Forward guidance is where the Federal Reserve basically tells you what their interest rate policy is going to be. On any real estate development project, any city borrowing, any government borrowing, be it federal, municipal, provincial, state, whatever, if you have the stability of interest rates and you know what interest rates are going to be, you can plan effectively. But however, that quantitative easing has brought us to this discussion today in terms of the amount of real estate development, foreign investment. We have something called a working holiday visa in this country that is basically unfettered immigration that turns into PR. So we have enormous stress on the housing stock of the city of Vancouver, Toronto, Montreal, all across Canada. We've even got people buying property left, right, and center in places like Powell River. So in answer to your question, I know a bit long-winded here, but that site, in looking at it, at that time, would have been fantastic social housing because of the price, because of the cost of the land. Okay, the cleanup of the site was obviously going to be a consideration.
Okay, that's, because you didn't really answer my question. I think I'm good.
Okay, that's your time. Councillor Reimer, you have questions?
I don't have a question for the speaker, but I did have a procedural issue.
Okay, so that is all your questions. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Long-winded for a deferment, thank you.
Councillor Mr. Cassidy, thank you. And councillor Reimer questioned before we recess for the night.
It's a small, but hopefully not important in the future thing. The speakers list for today's public hearing has the wrong date on it, which for posterity would be good to have the right date on it.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. So we are at our 11 o'clock closing time for tonight, which means we are going to recess. We've heard up to speaker 92. So again, we'll give councillor an opportunity to email any questions to staff overnight tomorrow. We will be back here tomorrow at 5:00 PM, Friday, 5:00 PM, to hear from speaker number 93 and on. So we will be continuing then. And thanks everyone for all the time you put in. Many people here and tuned in and we appreciate all of the involvement and engagement. And we are recessing this public hearing for the night. We'll see you all tomorrow night at 5:00. Thanks.